Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Greater Nappany regular session of council for the 26th Great. Thank you, everyone, to the Town of Greater Nappany regular session of council for the 26th day of August 2025. We'll call the meeting to order, and just before we do that, day of August 2025. We'll call the meeting to order and just before we do that, I just want I just want to remind everyone that this evening's meeting is being livestreamed via to remind everyone that this evening's meeting is being live streamed via our YouTube channel. our YouTube channel. So, welcome to the folks that are here in council chambers this evening. So, welcome to the folks that are here in council chambers this evening. Welcome to those that are Welcome to those that are home watching, and welcome to those that will watch it tomorrow home watching and welcome to those that will watch it tomorrow or next day or next week or or next day or next week or next year. So, we'll start with our opening proceedings, next year. So, we'll start with our opening proceedings, which is the playing of the National which is the playing of the National Anthem. And so if I get everyone in the council chambers Anthem. And so if I get everyone in the council chambers to stand, we'll play our National Anthem. to stand, we'll play our National Anthem. Thank you, everyone. We're going to start this evening's meeting with maybe one of the Thank you, everyone. We're going to start this evening's meeting with maybe one of the most most difficult things any of us on council have had to do or may ever do. Approximately difficult things any of us on council have had to do or may ever do. Approximately one month ago, one month ago, Councilor Dave Pennell Jr. suddenly passed away. Dave was a current member Councilor Dave Pennell Jr. suddenly passed away. Dave was a current member of this council and of this council and had served on the previous term of council as a representative of Ward had served on the previous term of council as a representative of Ward Three. Many of us knew Three. Many of us knew Dave as a dedicated member of council who committed countless hours to make Dave as a dedicated member of council who committed countless hours to make this community the best this community the best community possible. Dave was a thorough, committed representative community possible. Dave was a thorough, committed representative of the Greater Nappany, of the Greater Nappany, who always came to meetings prepared, had researched matters of who always came to meetings prepared, had researched matters of discussion above and beyond discussion above and beyond that of which was presented to us, and was an active part in all that of which was presented to us, and was an active part in all decisions of council. decisions of council. Along with his official duties, Dave also served on a number of committees Along with his official duties, Dave also served on a number of committees of council, of council, both while being a member of the town council as well as prior to being elected. both while being a member of the town council as well as prior to being elected. Dave served Dave served on the Pool Aquatics Committee for many terms, as well as, most recently, on the Pool Aquatics Committee for many terms, as well as, most recently, the Market Square the Market Square Advisory Committee. Serving on these committees, the work he conducted Advisory Committee. Serving on these committees, the work he conducted further exemplified his further exemplified his love for this town and all the citizens that live here. Dave never left love for this town and all the citizens that live here. Dave never left an opportunity within an opportunity within a discussion to remind us the benefits of a pool would have to our a discussion to remind us the benefits of a pool would have to our community. But it wasn't just community. But it wasn't just his official committee work that he took pride in. Dave his official committee work that he took pride in. Dave was involved in numerous other events was involved in numerous other events outside of his official capacity of council. One of outside of his official capacity of council. One of those was his involvement in organizing those was his involvement in organizing the Santa Claus Parade, or more commonly referred the Santa Claus Parade, or more commonly referred to as the Parade of Lights. They fully committed to as the Parade of Lights. They fully committed themselves to being a part of the organizing himself to being a part of the organizing committee of this event, a task that was not committee of this event, a task that was not an easy one. The Parade of Lights consistently an easy one. The Parade of Lights consistently involved no less than 100 floats that weaved its involved no less than 100 floats that weaved its way through our downtown core. A parade so way through our downtown core. A parade so vast that Santa Claus himself was just leaving vast that Santa Claus himself was just leaving the staging area as the front of the parade was the staging area as the front of the parade was returning to it. This event brings immense returning to it. This event brings immense amounts of joy to our residents, of our community, amounts of joy to our residents, of our community, and well beyond. And Dave had a large part of and well beyond. And Dave had a large part of that. Despite all of his public commitments Dave that. Despite all of his public commitments Dave was involved in, I think Dave's greatest was involved in, I think Dave's greatest commitment he had was to his family and to commitment he had was to his family and to those that were close to him. Dave had the ability and those that were close to him. Dave had the ability and ensured that, no matter the commitment ensured that, no matter the commitment he made to his public life, it was a fraction of what he he made to his public life, it was a fraction of what he committed to his private life. Dave committed to his private life. Dave made a profound impact to our community and his efforts made a profound impact to our community and his efforts will not be forgotten. Dave's passing will not be forgotten. Dave's passing should be a reminder to all of us that life is delicate. should be a reminder to all of us that life is delicate. Life is short. It's a reminder Life is short. It's a reminder that we need to commit to the important things in life: our that we need to commit to the important things in life: our family, our loved ones, our community, family, our loved ones, our community, and to focus on what's right in our lives and not what's and to focus on what's right in our lives and not what's wrong. It's a reminder not to sweat wrong. It's a reminder not to sweat the small stuff and to enjoy every moment that we have. the small stuff and to enjoy every moment that we have. I think it's safe to assume that as we I think it's safe to assume that as we move forward, things are going to be different for move forward, things are going to be different for all of us. But what shouldn't change is all of us. But what shouldn't change is the commitment to our community as exemplified by the commitment to our community as exemplified by Dave. I think it's something that we owe to Dave. I think it's something that we owe to him. To Tanya, Dave's mum Carol, his sister Sherry, him. To Tanya, Dave's mum Carol, his sister Sherry, daughter Nicole, please accept our most daughter Nicole, please accept our most sincere condolences at this most difficult time. Please sincere condolences at this most difficult time. Please know that Dave made a profound know that Dave made a profound difference in our community, that he grew up in, and he loved. difference in our community, that he grew up in, and he loved. I know that his efforts will I know that his efforts will not be forgotten. At this point, I'd like to take a brief recess, not be forgotten. At this point, I'd like to take a brief recess, and we'll see you folks and we'll see you folks at home in five to 10 minutes. So, thank you. at home in five to 10 minutes. So, thank you. Great. Thank you for the folks at home. Thank you for your indulgence. Obviously, it's going to be a tougher evening than some of us thought. So, just before we go any further, I just want to thank Chief Armstrong and the Greater Nappany Fire Department for the honor guard that he provided this evening. Chief, it was an extremely nice touch, and I know Dave would have been proud of that. So, thank you very much for doing that. So, moving into our regular agenda here, we'll deal with our closed session issues or matters first. If we could look for a motion to rise and report from closed session. Moved by Councilor Martin, seconded by Councilor Norrie. If there are no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. I'd like to report that in closed session this evening. Council approved the closed session minutes of July 22nd, received information regarding a labor relations matter and gave direction to staff, received third-party confidential information and gave direction to staff, and received information regarding a draft agreement and gave direction on negotiations to staff. Having done that, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda as presented. Look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Move by Councilor Hicks, seconded by Councilor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure, pecuniary interest, and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. First on our list this evening is presentations, and we have the OPP detachment commander, Inspector Dave Tullow, here to do a presentation. So, come on up, Dave. And I think you may have been here, but we always give you the, we'll give you the Reader's Digest version. You're going to have a couple of microphones that are in front of you. There's a button on the right-hand side that says "Talk", you have to actually push that and hold that button down so that the folks at home can hear your presentation. If you don't, then I get yelled at and I get some nasty emails and text messages. So, thank you. Welcome this evening. And Staff Sergeant O'Byrne is here as well to assist. Whenever you're ready, Dave, the floor be yours.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, good evening, councilors. Thank you for having us here today. As you indicated, I have with me Staff Sergeant, is it not on? Oh, hold it down for the whole, okay. I thought it was all different. Thank you, Your Worship, and good evening, councilors. Thank you very much for having me as the detachment commander for Lennington, Addington OPP, here to speak to you. I have also with me Staff Sergeant Ella Byrne. Our detachment's managed by two staff sergeants, one in charge of operations, and the other one who oversees our support services. So, Staff Sergeant O'Byrne oversees operations, and that entails our frontline officers, our platoons, our crime unit, Community Street Crime Unit. So, all those entities that are out there, more on the frontline. And Staff Sergeant Dean Snyder, who's not with us this evening, is more responsible for our court services, all the administrative pieces, our civilian staff, guards, auxiliary program, and that sort of thing. So, Your Worship, this evening, I'm here to speak to the 2024 OPP annual report. And here we are in August, and we're presenting a 2024 annual report. So, just by way of background, in April 1st of 2024, the new CSPA was introduced. And what that is, is a replacement for the old Police Services Act. And with that came a lot of guidelines with regards to responsibilities of OPP detachments, OPP detachment boards, the reporting relationship and our responsibilities. And part of that is that we have to, by June, the end of June each year, have the annual report reported. This year, it was delayed because the OPP working with the provincial government and understanding of what exactly the process would look like, what our reports would look like. So, we didn't get final approval to release this annual report until just after, actually, early July. So, our OPP detachment board does have a copy of this. And so, I thought it appropriate to reach out to the various municipalities and just introduce the report at a very high level, and just offer ourselves up for any questions you may have with regards to policing in your community. So, I do have some high-level pieces that I can share from the report, and maybe we can start there. And again, now, Your Worship, if there's any questions after about the report or anything else, I'm more than happy to answer. And we're very privileged with our board to have our detachment board chair, Councilor Norrie, sits on our panel, has done a great job with his previous policing experience, too. I think it's a great asset to the board with regards to what that policing culture looks like and our relationship with our communities and how valuable that is. So, the board was up and running late last year. We've had a few detachment board meetings now. Councilor Norrie and I attended a detachment, or Police, Ontario Association Police Service Boards meeting in London about two months ago and now together. And it was a great opportunity for us to network with other chiefs of police and other board personnel from around the province and just see where we're heading with this new act. And I'm sorry, I have to hold this down continuously? Okay.
Yeah, you have to hold the button down. We're going to try and rectify that in the not-too-distant future. But until we get there, yeah, that's the rules of engagement.
And maybe just my apologies, just by way of introduction. And so, I've been the detachment commander in Lennington, Addington for about two and a half years now. Prior to this, I'm in my 35th year of policing. I started with Gulf Police and have been with the OPP since 1997, and I've been in a number of bureaus throughout the province. And my home is in Bath, Ontario. And I came to this position when Inspector Scott Semple was moved to a new position, and I came in an interim basis. And through my regional command, I was asked if I would like to stay on. And I could tell you that the people and the officers that work out of Lennington Detachment are exceptional. They're fully committed. And that was part of the reason I said that I would be more than happy to stay on and work with this detachment. And that was part of the reason I said that I would be more than happy to stay on and and work with this detachment, so that's who I am. And with that then, I'll just speak to the twenty twenty four detachment board report, so I believe everyone has a copy and so. If you, just for your reference, it is this copy here. And so the twenty twenty four annual report highlights our crime, our roadway, waterway and trail safety plans as well as our community wellbeing initiatives. And also highlights the various successes from the past year. In twenty twenty four, this this particular report represents a midway point for Lennington Addington OPP. As we have the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five detachment action plan, and that's where we set out our goals and we provide. Measurables along the way to see how we're how we're achieving, so this midway report, this annual report. Does provide us an opportunity to pause and reflect on the work that we've been doing and position ourselves for the coming year until the new action plan comes out. And with the introduction or the new detachment board, that's one of the responsibilities that we do is we work with that board in determining what our community priorities are. And our next detachment action plan will not be something that's just created internally, but really it's it's created with our communities through our detachment board. Over the past few years, we have worked to increase detachment capacity to achieve investigative excellence, we've done this by training our people. Reducing violent crimes and increased public awareness of technology-based crimes. So during the past year, we've provided temporary assignment opportunities to a number of officers, providing experiential learning for the management of more complex criminal cases. Our detachment, as well as many detachments, in fact, it suggests most municipal police service, we're hiring a lot of officers and our detachment is made up of. I suspect eighty percent of our frontline has less than four years on the job and maybe even less than three years in the job, so. Obviously, with training capacities in the province and having one venue, the Ontario Police College, it does pose a bit of a barrier to us in in bringing our people up to speed, so. It is a real important piece of our action plan to get our officers to train they're required in order to provide that investigative excellence piece. We've increased the number of officers trained in major case investigations, including human trafficking investigations. Intimate partner violence, formerly known as domestic violence investigations and investigative interviewing techniques, some basic investigations, but. Critical to to the work that we do, these are critical policies and. We've we've been fortunate enough through both Ontario Police College and internal initiatives to get the training for these officers in these more major case. Types of occurrences, our officers are trained also in the community safety outreach system, commonly referred to as our CCTV system here in the community, which is owned by the municipality, but. We do have the partnership in that we do have the opportunity to review the network to assist us in solving crimes and it's been very useful. We have, we've located stolen vehicles, we've located missing persons and we've solved other crimes where that network is present, so it's it's proven invaluable. Within our area and our officers are aware and certain officers actually have full access to using this system. The OPP created the Crime Prevention and Community Safety Bureau, it's a response to a culmination of several concurrent organizational initiatives. Our detachment supports this bureau and its work through a new position that we put in, dedicated to supporting abuse investigations. Ensuring that we are providing the highest level of support to those victims of crime, so we have a an officer now, it's a brand-new position, it's an enhancement to our detachment. And her job is to monitor each day all abuse-type calls within our community and make sure the appropriate social services are contacted. Make sure the investigations are thorough, reaching out to our crown attorneys, reaching out to those families and also reaching out to victim services who work at our detachment and ensuring. That those victims are supported through their, through the justice journey. We've put more resources towards engaging with vulnerable community groups to educate individuals and organizations about several serious types of fraud, how they work and how to prevent them. With regards to the roadway, waterways and trails, we focused on engagement and education, emphasizing the need for every driver and passenger. To eliminate all manner of risk to prevent serious injury or loss of life, we've engaged with communities, stakeholders and regional traffic teams to address specific issues. And during the past year, we've committed a full-time marine program, so between May to September, we have a full-time, an officer who works full-time. And he's on the waterways within Lennington Addington, that's supported by officers who are trained in the marine program also in our attachment that will pull off. Platoon for a couple of weeks to work with this officer. In twenty twenty four, our program alone had over one thousand three hundred engagements with marine operators on our waterways, promoting recreational safety. And enforcing our zero tolerance on failing to have life jackets and and under and other poorer habits on our on our waterways, so. This also is supported by East Region has our own, their own marine team and it's known as SAVE. And this team also is present on our waterways on a regular basis, so we have the Lennington Addington Marine Program full-time as well as our SAVE team who is down. They're sharing their time amongst all the lakes here in eastern Ontario, but as we have so many here, we often see them on our waterways each day, so we have a very good presence on our waterways. And our SAVE team also, again, a provincial asset located here in East Region, supports us on our trails and ATVs and stuff during during the seasons. Our officers remain steadfast in their commitment to keeping our roads safe, in twenty twenty four, in our report, we reported impaired driving enforcement increased by twenty percent. Speed enforcement increased by thirty-two percent over twenty twenty-three, our seatbelt enforcement doubled. Over twenty twenty-three numbers and distracted driving enforcement near tripled since twenty twenty-three. Our fatal motor vehicle collisions were reduced in twenty twenty-four over the previous year and I'm pleased to report that year-to-date fatalities are zero. Personal injury collisions and property damage collisions collisions are all down and year-to-date twenty twenty-five, through our initiatives, we reduced all collisions by fourteen percent so far. We formed a traffic alliance with our neighbouring detachments, which again is one of the luxuries we have as OPP, we really do police boundary-free. We call in the support of our regional traffic team, who's housed both out of our Odessa detachment and our Queenie West detachment, we have those officers in addition to our own officers. Who are focused on our big four, which is our speeding, our seatbelts, distracted driving and impaired driving. This this alliance allows us to increase our visibility and our capacity to both educate and enforce road safety initiatives. We work, also work closely with with the. Various other sectors within our within our region, for example, we have emergency response team, our tactical response team and another other number of other provincial. Partners who, when they're not doing their duties, are on our roadways and assisting us with our various initiatives. And again, we're fortunate here in Lennington Addington, we do have our tactical response team housed out of Odessa. We have a number of emergency response team who are a provincial asset and belong to the region, who are housed out of our detachment, Frontenac detachment, who are often our area too, so. Again, these are all additional officers who support our various initiatives. With regards to community wellbeing, we focused on a sustained response model, recognizing community engagement. And collaboration as a cornerstone for success towards common approaches approaches and best practices. Our OPP auxiliary unit is one I'm very proud of, they've increased increased our ability to reach out to our community with a number of crime prevention programs. We have a shared commitment with local government, residents and community partners across different sectors to improve social conditions and enhance public safety. Our twenty twenty four report speaks to our continue continued efforts to expand our capacity to meet the needs of the most vulnerable in our community. Through the Integrated Mobile Crisis Response Team. And through, this is achieved through provincial grant funding, we now have three, we call them MCERTs, so Mobile Crisis Response Team, three workers. Who are social service workers who work out of our detachment and they attend calls, mental health calls with our officers. And in fact, their office is strategically located at the exit point of our detachment, so. Our officers can walk right past their office and grab one of them and we, they often attend calls with us. In twenty twenty four, MCERT received more than four thousand service contacts, they completed more than one thousand two hundred follow-up interactions. And supported individuals and exchanged more than two thousand five hundred calls or text messages with with members of our community who were in need. Our community engagement officer works in the same office and you'll often see them downtown, walking in our parks, getting to know those vulnerable people in our community, understanding what their needs are. And doing our best to connect them with appropriate social services and help them out of their current situation. Our detachments also worked very closely with the Greater Napanee municipality to secure grant funding for the expansion of CCTV network, as I mentioned. This technology has proven valuable and we look forward to that ongoing partnership and building that network even further. Also, over the last year and year-to-date, our numbers continue to rise, but we've increased the number of hours towards our foot patrol and bike patrol in our communities. And more specifically within Lennington Addington, the Greater Napanee area, we've heard from our downtown merchants that there is a sense of insecurity in the downtown. And with that, we have enhanced our bike patrol, we, the hours are significantly increased this year over last year. We've also had a few different initiatives to ensure that we have a police presence in our parks, along our trails and the downtown core. Most recently, we we tried something a little different, a little more innovative approach, we had officers out, still clearly visible as police officers wearing the, our vests that have police on it. Our use of force, but they weren't wearing shirts, they were wearing black shirts with pants and just tried to soften our approach throughout the summer. And tried to establish relations and kind of a little bit more of an intelligence gathering too of what's going on in our parks. Obviously, we do hear concerns and we're aware of drug issues and the passing of drugs and stuff, and so. This was a very successful program that Staff Sergeant O'Byrne ran throughout the summer and we, the feedback we got from both our downtown, the residents and and our officers. Suggested that they had more interaction with those persons than they would if they were in full OPP uniform, which. We can debate whether that's good or not, but it was an innovative approach after hearing the concerns of our community and trying to have greater reach into into those issues. The report will also speak to some statistics and just again to highlight a few because we can certainly go into a rabbit hole and discuss them. And I'm often cautious, if I don't have the time to speak to the numbers, careful about what we do speak to only because. Underneath these issues, there's usually, we do a lot of digging to understand the numbers and what's behind those numbers, so. With regards to our dispatch calls in twenty twenty four, we had twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and one calls for Lennington Addington OPP. And as far as our immediate police response, this is, this is the dangerous calls, calls where officers, it's high priority and they would have to leave a current call to attend. That was eleven thousand and one calls where they were very high priority in our community in twenty twenty four. Our violent crime numbers in twenty twenty four, our calls, our total call, violent crime calls were up, they were up sixty-four calls over twenty twenty-three. With five hundred and ninety-five in the in the twenty-three year versus six hundred and fifty-nine in twenty twenty four. This number is attributed to an increase in assaults, so that's common assaults and that could come from. Community, just regular neighborhood issues or domestic, it's, that's where those numbers come from, it's rather significant. But we had a reduction in things like sexual assaults, which we, a lot of detachments and actually provincially, we're seeing an increase, so we're happy and the number of sexual assaults were down quite a bit too, so. Aside from the assaults though, with regards to violent crime in our community, all of our numbers were trending downwards or remain rather status quo. Property crimes, we had a total number of nine hundred and seventy-eight property crime calls in twenty twenty four, down from, down one hundred and ninety-six calls over from twenty twenty-three. With one thousand one hundred and seventy-four reported in twenty twenty-three and nine hundred and seventy-eight in twenty twenty four. The greatest reduction being found in all thefts, thefts over five thousand dollars, thefts under five thousand dollars. And that was a direct result in the reduction and our impaired driving charges were up in the last year with two hundred and eighty-one charges in twenty twenty-four versus two hundred and forty-one in twenty twenty-three, so. The impaired actually speaks to our. Our targeted approach to both impaired operation and distracted driving, two two causal factors for our. Main causal factors for our personal injury, motor vehicle collisions as well as our fatalities provincially. So we've put a fair bit of focus at that and it's still alarming, the number of impaired driving charges and number of people still operating out on their community. The one thing about having our our detachment board in place now is there were opportunities for funding, grant funding for different community safety initiatives that we miss out on as a community without having the board. But we're happy now with having a board that we can push a lot of that grant funding through the board and we can obtain it, so most recently, we've just submitted our application for this year's festive ride program. Where the provincial government gives us funding, gives all municipalities funding based on your population to assist with. Putting together festive ride programs, which really runs from October-ish through to end of September, or end of January, pardon me, so. Great, great stuff, you'll you'll learn that I'm a big advocate for detachment boards and that relationship. In twenty twenty five, we'll continue to inform our detachment board about our, the work we did. Each of the past few meetings, we've been bringing out our people to the meetings to share their work and educate our board. On the work and the services being provided in the community. One of our first meetings, we had our community street crime unit come out and speaks, Detective Sergeant Dave Horowitz spoke of the of his team. And what this is, it's a team within our detachment who's focused on community issues, primarily drug-related issues. If you follow the news and have seen some of the most recent warrants we've executed, where we've removed, removed a substantial amount of fentanyl off our streets. Last year, we removed, I think, just over a hundred firearms from one search warrant, that's the work of this team and the the work is exceptional. And I'd suggest that it's probably one of the most successful community street crime teams in the province of Ontario. Through his leadership and the work that these officers do every day. They do work with community street crime officers from Frontenac, Prince Edward County and Queenie West, they do come together and do some joint force operations. So we do have that enhanced capacity through that, through those partnerships too. We also, last meeting, had our community engagement officer come with a member of the Mobile Crisis Response Team and explain the work they did. And as I indicated a short time ago, spoke the significant impact they have in our community and our ability to help those vulnerable persons. We spoke of our court services here in Lennington Addington, our detachment's responsible for three courts. We have also our our family court, provincial offences and Superior and Ontario Court of Justice. And we have a full-time court office who's managing security at those various buildings as well as. Processing over one thousand two hundred criminal briefs last year and it's all run through their office, managed. Working with the crown attorneys and seeing those cases through the justice system. We introduced our marine program and as indicated, we talked about that significant impact with an outreach of over one thousand three hundred interactions with our our operators in the water. And the last report also highlighted our mobile, frontline mobile digital technology, we spoke of in-car cameras, all of our vehicles now have in-car cameras. So that's all recorded to a cloud base, our officers all are equipped and actually, we've just gone into second-generation body-worn cameras. Our officers are all equipped with body-worn cameras and we do have policy surrounding both in-car and body-worn cameras where our officers shall be using these and having them operating during interactions with the public. These have proven valuable, similar to the technology that the municipality has with the CCTV. This, we haven't really fully realized it yet, but it has and it will further significantly reduce the time in court, given the video evidence we have, particularly with dangerous driving. We also use it for victim statements, we're able to record those through audio and that. Mobile workstations in our vehicles, our officers have access to nearly everything in the cruiser and it really has become their office on wheels. Whether it be provincial, federal databases, are able to do their reports and everything else. They also have personal cell phones and these cell phones are attached to their body-worn camera, in-car camera. We have all the apps that are available on the mobile tablets are on their phones, so we have actually heard from the public that they were driving by and saw an officer. In his car looking down, it looks like he was on his phone and questioning why maybe he maybe should be working, but in fact, he was or she was. That all the work is now done on their phones and that's where they gather the. done on their phones and that's where they gather the evidence and they upload it into cloud databases appended to occurrences. And so the technology is quite impressive. I'm sure Councilor Norrie probably experienced that today, actually doing a ride along with one of our officers. Our vehicles are also equipped with the automated license plate recognition system. We call that ALPR and that is the capacity to receive a number of license plates per second, run it through a database and provide our officers with instant results for wanted persons, suspended drivers, expired validations, stolen vehicles. All that information is available instantly as soon as cars pass any one of our vehicles now. All of our vehicles and all of our officers are GPSed now through this technology. And most recently, we've just acquired a new radio system. It's a modern encrypted and innovative radio system. It's inter-ministerial system that will be utilized by eight Ontario ministries and more than 38,000 frontline emergency responders will be, will have access to this system. It will allow for interoperability and all radios have the GPS technology, improving officer's safety through the ability to respond to an officer in an emergency situation. So significant enhancement with regards to frontline policing and the tools that they have. So again, all these things, we continue to share with our detachment board to increasing their awareness of who we are, what we do and who our people are and the great work that they do. And also through the board, we welcome any feedback from any of our municipalities that we police. I know Councilor Norrie and I have got a very candid relationship, we're no problem to talk about what's on the minds of the community and we just have that trusting relationship and I think that's what's most important when we get the implementation of things like the detachment board. So maybe I'll just pause for a second because I'm near complete unless Staff Sergeant O'Burn has anything to add. Your worship, that's kind of my high-level report for our 2024. I'm certainly welcome yourself or any of your councillors, wish to ask any questions.
Thank you, Inspector. It's quite obvious policing has changed, hasn't it? Is there any questions? Oh, we've got a number of questions, just hang tight. It'll go Deputy Mayor Cowherd, then I'll come, Sir Martin.
Say thank you through your worship. A little out of practice with the microphone here. Just a couple of quick questions. How many, how many officers are working out of the Napanee detachment? And ballpark number?
One minute, so I can actually give you the exact numbers here for a couple areas, I think that's important, so I'll just share that. Through your worship, our office says, myself as one detachment commander, two staff sergeants, we have nine sergeants and 50 provincial constables. Of that, seven are assigned to our crime unit, four are in our community street crime unit that I talked about, our CSEU. We have one community engagement officer, two uniform members in our courts with one special constable in court and four part-time officers in court. We have two cadets working at our detachment and in fact, we're just celebrating that one of our cadets just got on with the OPP and will be reporting to our detachment at completion of his training. And then we also have civilian staff too. We have two detachment admin who work at our Desa office and three who work at the Napanee office as well as two caretakers.
So do you have a total number or just I was supposed to be adding that all up as I was going through? I just looked over a ballpark and the reason I'm asking this question, I get a lot of, a lot of public wanting, you know, why can't we have our own police department? How come we haven't got it? Because we can't physically afford it. And I was just trying to get an idea how many officers are out of that detachment because it's, it's more than the six or seven we might have had back in the day.
Yeah, through you, your worship, we have about 73 officers, uniform people, includes the ranks. The one thing that we do have coming though is, is the service delivery model. So a few years ago, Commissioner Carrick, our OPP commissioner approached the government and talked about the ideal staffing of OPP detachments and what is really required to provide adequate and effective policing. And while a detachment may have say 70 uniform members, what we need to consider too is the fact that we have members who are on accommodated duties, various types of leaves, officers who are away on training. Every officer is responsible for attending one week of training per year as required by legislation. So these things all impede our ability to put that full complement on the road in an order for us then to adequately provide the policing, we needed more bodies. So this detachment, as well as many detachments across the province, will be getting an enhancement. I don't have the exact number, but we will be getting an enhancement of officers to Lennox Addington over the next coming, the next few years. I believe the service delivery model is to be rolled out sometime by 2028, end of 2027. So we do have four new officers coming to our detachment in 2026. They've already been identified and they will be going on training, so that is an enhancement to our existing numbers.
Excellent. That's, that's all I was just trying to get an idea, like I say, every time I turn around, I'm getting that same question asked. A lot of people don't realize Napanee proper versus Greater Napanee is a little bit larger than what it used to be. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Go ahead, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, thanks to both of you for coming here tonight and appreciate the report. I've always had the greatest amount of respect for the men and women who protect our community and my questions, I got a couple of questions here. Most are related to our taxpayers and the taxes they pay because I just want to know kind of, do the taxpayers get value for their tax dollars? I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I'm concerned about out-of-district calls, like does, is it at all your opinion that Napanee might get charged for, you know, a call to Tamworth, a call to Disrano, Stone Mills?
Through your worship to Councilor Martin, so in answer to that question, we, I mean, obviously the OPP are the police of the province and we do have pressures that we have to respond to. So for example, in the past, maybe half a year, a bit more than half a year now, we've had the added pressure. Again, this isn't a cost to the community, but I'm just speaking with regards to how our people do find themselves policing in other areas. So for example, we've supported the enhanced border security that's been asked by our province, so we do support that. Again, it doesn't come as a cost to this community, but it is a pressure on our people. So they do, they do end up out of area and we have various initiatives that do take our people out. We also are police of jurisdiction to our neighbors in the Tintinaga Territory and they do have their own police service and there are occasions where they require our assistance and whether their staffing is short that day or they have a major investigation and they need our expertise. So we do find ourselves assisting Tintinaga on those occasions when either they don't have the staffing to police their community that particular day or there is a more serious investigation where they need our expertise since, for example, our crime unit or additional bodies to support with whatever that call might be. So we do get pulled to those areas. I will say that two-thirds of, of what the OPP does is actually funded provincially and we are very fortunate in our community here to have our tactical response team, our emergency response team, our save team who's on our trails and waterways, our traffic team. And those are just to name a few and I'm sure if I think a bit more, reflect, I can think of a few more provincial entities who are within our community, just be given our geography and where they're based out of, that we benefit from. So as far as, and I don't think your question was really, is the community getting value for the money, but as a detachment commander, I can assure you they are. Do we have pressures on occasion which do take our officers and it does kind of put a pressure on our ability to maybe provide, you know, some more proactive policing on a given day in our community because of those pressures? Yes, there are those occasions, but we're very, we very closely monitor that and we're aware of them and we work with our partners to make sure that those are mitigated.
Yep, go ahead, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I was just concerned about out-of-district calls and our taxpayers paying for another community's policing. That's mainly what I was concerned about or questioning at least. Also, one other question I had, do you have a, is it your opinion that the level of service is the same in both urban and rural Greater Napanee?
Through your worship, well, first of all, I can just go, I'm going to answer that, Councilor Martin, I'm just going to step back to the last question because one thing I think is important too is when we have a serious call in any of our communities in Lennox Addington, the one thing that we do is we pull from the OPP and we bring resources in here also, which is, so as much as we may provide, you know, for example, maybe be in Frontenac on a particular afternoon because something serious has happened there, if we have something in our community, our organization's very quick to bring in the resources which we need. And if you've ever been part of anything like that, it's very impressive with what our organization brings at a moment's notice and how quickly we can get it into place. Now with regards to your follow-up question, whether or not urban and rural areas are policed the same, the level of service, the availability to police is the same. Trying to, trying to answer this appropriately because obviously we have more officers located in the Greater Napanee area than we would in the Addington Highlands area, but that's not to say we don't have officers in Addington Highlands area. In fact, there could be times because we have our traffic team working up there along the Highway 7 corridor with commercial motor vehicle enforcement and those sort of things. And we also have our save team on the trails and waterways. And in addition, in addition to those officers who are assigned to that area to work, they do have the policing available to them, but if you look at the numbers, they may not have as many that might be available right now in the, in the Napanee area. So it's our effort that we manage our resources accordingly, that we do have good representation in all of our areas. And sometimes that looks differently depending on the day, the time of day and if we're aware of any events going on. But we do a great job and through Staff Sergeant O'Burn managing those platoons, I'd, I'd very comfortably answer that, that both rural and urban within Lennox Addington are being policed the same, but the look might be a little different, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. I think I have one more question here. You've answered somewhat in, yeah, in, in, in our hometown here in Napanee, is there more calls to commercial establishments or residential establishments?
Yeah, through your worship, it would be residential just based on statistics and yeah, residential be the greatest because, you know, the residential, and actually too, when you look at, when you look at cost of policing and the, and the, those calls that are actually costing our communities, they're generally from the residential side because that's generally where we have our, our victim-based crimes and property crime and whereas our commercial are more property-based crime for the most part. And our victim-based crimes are those crimes that actually take more hours to investigate. So based on the costing model, they're obviously going to impact our community more. And that's where, you know, we reach out and we look at those numbers and, you know, I spoke tonight about our increase in assaults and we've looked behind the number on those and we do know that a lot of that comes from mental health calls, which, you know, are our intimate, intimate violence calls, they are those interactions with our vulnerable and those unhoused persons and who we're trying to help. And that's why programs such as the M-Cert program and our community engagement officer and having those resources available to us, we're constantly focused on how to drive those down, not only because it's what's right for our community, it's what's right for those people and getting the help they need, but also that's what impacts cost of policing too and that's what taps into our resources and takes away from our ability to do proactive things like be in our schools and have that, that community people-centered type approach and that's what builds public trust in policing. So it is the residential, that is what primarily is, if you were to break a billing piece down, I'd suggest that most of it's coming from the residential, just because that's the type of calls that are being responded to.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's good.
Thank you, Councilor Martin. Is there anything else? Yep, go ahead, Councilor Schenk.
So thank you very much for coming. Councilor Martin's asking also, I agree with what he's asking, but you have the GPS and you have the data just for the Greater Napanee based on calls because our largest ticket item, our expense is OPP billing. All right. So since according to the palace and that we have 75% or close to probably 80% now of unhoused between Prince Edward County and Lennox Addington. And as you just well mentioned, that the extra cost because of mental health and stuff like that, are all those numbers being tracked just, just for our own sakes? Because when we pay a bill, we like to know, okay, well, if we have this many people and this is what our call is because out of the 151,000 hours, we only had 22,000 are proactive because it's taking away, because you only have so many people taking away from proactive, so I have to go here because you can only dispatch where your calls are. And so I would just like to know, you know, working with the numbers that our CAO or staff could ask for those numbers, so we'll know what our increase is for that area and what could we do? Because I know with the CAO and you're, are trying to mitigate those things, but it just helps our case of what we're doing and where the influx is and how can we work with that and stuff like that. I just more data-driven, so when I see the numbers, then I can relate the numbers to where the calls are. And when you do that, also the provincial highways, because it's a provincial responsibility and Lollas Parkway, Highway 33, that that's, you know what I mean? So we can take, kick that out, that's the province, not the penny pitch. I wish the province would just pay your bill and, you know, it would be so much easier because they negotiate your contract, negotiate everything else. So it just said, as long as you're keeping that data like you have on everything else, like when I went through all your numbers and all the different cases that you've done, just to, so we can rationalize, okay, this is what happened in Greater Napanee, this is the amount of calls, this is the reason why, you know, and what can we do to help? That's because we have to all work together to have a better outcome because we want the numbers to go down, not up, because I'd much rather have proactive policing than reactive policing by all means. And how, this is one other thing, this is a bet, is the catch and release program. How can we help you on that? Because you guys do your job and you bring them in, by the time you've done the paperwork, they're walking down the street. So how, how can we help on the political end? Because I think it's nothing more frustrating is you see somebody with mental health, but there's a drug issue or something like that and people go ahead and get arrested or whatever and they kick them out and you're going, what do you, you know, it's just that we work together to find it somehow to change the system or, or give, let you guys have. I would much rather have more proactive, like I said beforehand. Is this that we work together with the data that we can go ahead and fight something with the data that you get?
Through your worship to Councilor Schenk, you have a little bit to unpack there. Yeah. Because I don't want to forget this piece, I'll speak to the data piece, but as far as in your terms of the catch and release and that sort of thing. With, if, if it's kind of directed towards our more vulnerable, the unhoused and that sort of thing, I think that that is, that's an example of why a lot of these issues aren't police issues. We're certainly a partner, but these are social service issues that we have to find the right resources for these people. And that's where over the last year, we've made some great strides in our community and, and we as the OPP don't take full credit for this, we're simply a partner at the table and we do now have an unhoused table that sits together and our social services and the police and fire come together and we talk about what's happening in our community and we talk about those vulnerable people. We're aware through our M-Cert program and our community engagement officer and what our partners bring in too, because a lot of these people are their clients and we talk about what the current status is and are we, are we succeeding? Are we providing the necessary resources? And there are some issues and, and you know, it's not a perfect, there's a lot to fix yet, but I, you know, as your detachment commander, I can tell you that I'm very happy with the partnerships within our community and how we have come together more than we ever have in the past couple of years to talk about these things and we are seeing some successes. So for example, year-to-date, we've had 300 mental health calls, which seems like a lot, but last year at the same time, we had 336 mental health calls. So we have seen a bit of a reduction there and so, you know, I have to look at that number, not just as the sole measure of our success, but it certainly is one measure and also just from the dialogue that our partners are all having and when we share successes and we're able to move some of our more vulnerable into housing or getting them support, those are successes and we see that and that stuff that isn't very easily reported, but I can assure you that there's a lot of good work going there. With regards to data, in fact, I was just at our East Region Headquarters meeting with our- With regards to data, in fact, I was just at our East Region Headquarters meeting with our two regional data analysts in the last couple of days or last week, sorry. And we're speaking to the data here in Lennington, adding to ending, Lennington, Addington area, I'm sorry. And and breaking that down into our municipalities and trying to understand it because, you know, to look at, you know, for example, our assault calls are up. I need to know what's behind that, what type of calls, who is it that it's that are are accused or victims? And do we have the appropriate resources at both our detachment level and are we engaged with the appropriate people in our community to mitigate that and bring that number down? And that goes with all the data. That's traffic, that's that's everything. So you know, data, data is a big part of what we as a management group look at. But again, I'm always cautious when I look at the number because it's means much more to me. I need to to dive into that and see exactly what are we talking about there. But so to your point about, you know, if I recall correctly, and you know, just as far as always trying to bring these numbers down, do better, make our community safer, building that trust in in us as municipal leaders and ultimately also reducing costs, which is which is an important piece that's we're working every day and looking at all pieces of of this. And that includes the data. So I can assure you that that is something we do look at regularly.
Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
As long as you have data for Greater Napanee. So you have the data for every municipality compiled into Lennington and Addington. Just that if ever called upon, that you have the data just for Napanee itself. That's what I'm kind of looking at.
Yes, Counselor Shank, we are, we're very heavy on data within the OPP and. Yeah, so Staff Sergeant O'Byrne just, so if 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 part of this is too, if it's GPS based, that that data, not necessarily, no, a lot of it's just what our officers are inputting. First of all, calls wherever received, the amount of time we're spending on calls and that stuff, it's all it's our our data collection is so complex within the OPP. And then I said, we do have analysts who specifically work with detachments to break that down. And that's how we align our initiatives and that. It's one of the pieces that we use. And again, so.
Just to understand where I'm coming from, years ago, when we signed the first contract with the OPP, all right, was, you know, then you compile the data and every municipality had, you know, the calls for service in that area. So you know where the hotspots are and stuff like this. And then as it progressed, all right, in years. And more contracts came on and all of a sudden that data was lost. No, we don't compile that data. That's what we're told. All right. Now, all I'm saying is as long as we complete the, have that data and we have a fair and open relationship and and you have that data, we have that data and we can see where it is, how we can help. And then when we negotiate with the OPP, you know, for the contracting, then we know exactly where you're talking, where we're talking. So where it's not like it's, no, it's in the cloud and I can't see it. So that's all I'm, you know, kind of referring to that. So since you compile that, then we're great.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Counselor Shank. And I think Counselor Norrie had a question or a comment anyway. Go ahead, Bob.
I'll just be brief. Thank you. Oh, thank you, gentlemen. A lot of the calls we get on the board is, why are there more officers on the road? You've addressed some of that. But I don't think the public realizes the amount of paperwork within arrest, especially a violent arrest, something called a crown brief. A lot of people don't understand that. It's not on TV. And you have to think like a crown attorney, a defense lawyer while you're filling us out at three in the morning, it could take you two, three hours. I understand you have a program coming where civilian are going to help doing some of that paperwork to free the officers up. Is that still coming? They could just alleviate the public?
Yes, through your worship, Counselor Norrie. Yes, so you're right. The, that's one piece that's changed significantly in policing is the amount of administrative work and checklists and, you know, notifications to external partners for various types of calls. These are all responsibilities of our officers and a lot of this is built into critical policy. So it's work that is required for them to have completed prior to the end of their shift. The OPP piloted a program in the last couple of years where they used what we call detachment operations clerks. And what this is, is assigning a civilian personnel, one member to the shift who would be trained to do a lot of the administrative work for our officers. And that leaving them on the road to do the work of a police officer, what we all know a police officer to do. And relieving them of that pressure, that that piece that's in the detachment, or it might force them to kind of remove themselves from the road and do proactive things or respond to calls. So we do have that. How we got that was we had, we've reinvested two of our detachment administrative positions. And we've, we've reassigned them to be detachment operations clerks. And we have one member who's transferring into our detachment who is already trained in this. So that's exciting. And we do have a posting for second position. These will be full time positions. This program has been piloted in the OPP. And in fact, our officers in these other detachments have said that they would give up an officer on a shift or two officers on a shift if it meant keeping this civilian support to keep, to do the administrative work for them. And what this is, is compiling the crown briefs and a number of the checks we have to do on people and a lot of, you know, whether it be uploading data from from the cloud that was captured on body worn camera, in car camera. Every time we get new technology, it seems to bring another administrative burden to the to the frontline. And so when we capture all capture all this video evidence is fantastic, but now it's got to be managed and renamed and uploaded and disclosed and stuff. So this position is going to help that. And so that will significantly enhance our ability to be out there and doing proactive stuff. So and again, that is first positions coming in September first. And where the reinvestment piece came in was we used to have criminal record checks. That's no longer responsibility of our detachment. The the work that was involved with motor vehicle collision report processing, that's all automated now and that's been taken away from the detachment. And so we're able to reinvest some of that capacity into this new work.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Norrie. Thank you, Inspector. Is there anything else, Counselor Hicks?
Thank you through you, through you, your worship. Just a very quick question then. You don't need to go into a lot of detail, but I found it interesting. I went to my physician and she put her phone on the table and she said, we have a new AI program, so everything you say is going to be recorded. I went, no, taken. And so we're going to cross that off the list. Is the OPP looking at using AI? Has there been any move to that? So you're talking about the the administrative operative who would be doing paperwork. Would they be using any sort of AI technology? Is that something that's been discussed?
Through your worship, Counselor Hicks, I'll be honest with you, I can't answer that question. I'm sure they are. To what capacity where it's being used, I don't know. It may be being used right now, but it's nothing as a detached commander I'm 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 aware of anyhow, but I have no doubt that'll be something that'll be coming soon too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else? Saying none. Thank you, gentlemen. It's been enlightening. And like I said earlier, the world of policing has changed and 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 I can appreciate you folks are dealing with the same thing, I think, that's happening in the medical world that you know, doctors want to be doctors. You don't want to be administrators, don't want to be report writers. And and we've seemed to have resolved that problem. So maybe we can do the same thing in the policing world where policemen just want to be policemen. They want to go catch bad guys, right? You don't want to be stuck around the office for eight, ten, twelve hours a day, downloading cameras and vetting things and doing reports and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully with a little bit of luck in the in the not too distant future, we'll start to see some of those things. But thank you. Thank you for supporting our community. Thank you for working with us in a lot of different things. And I know that we we do converse quite steady. So thank you for that. So. Having said that, we'll look for a motion to note and receive the presentation of Inspector Tublin and Staff Sergeant O'Byrne for this evening's meeting moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion carried. Thanks again, fellows, and I'm sure we'll talk soon.
Thank you, your worship.
Next up, we have a scheduled deputation on our agenda, Cynthia Soret, who is here representing the Rotary Club of Napanee with, I think, an extremely exciting presentation. So Cynthia. Well, as you could see, that the way that the system works is you have to push the button, hold the button if you're going to talk. And and I know that the folks at home are going to want to hear what you have to say. So welcome. And whenever, whenever you're ready, the floor will be yours.
Thank you very much, your worship, distinguished council members and staff. Thank you very much for having us. My name again is Cynthia Soret. I am the president of the Rotary Club of Napanee. I'm accompanied tonight by Mike Kalney and Amory Maloney, fellow club members. We've requested this opportunity to talk to you this evening about our market square. So before I get to that, I'd like to explain a little bit more about the history of the Rotary Club. Let me tell you a little bit about us. We are, we've been around for a long time. We've actually the oldest service club in the world. We were founded in nineteen oh five internationally, originally in Chicago, came to Canada in nineteen sixteen. And the Rotary Club of Napanee has actually been in active service to the community since nineteen twenty six. So that's ninety nine years. We've done a lot of things around Napanee, plenty of great projects over the years. This one, as you know, it's actually featured prominently on the town website. And it's probably the best known kid activity in town. It's been very popular these last few years. It was installed in twenty seventeen. And then a little later on, the Rotary Park, the accessible playground. It's another big project that we can accomplish and we saw it through from planning to fundraising, through to organizing, and then right into enjoying that space for everyone. We actually have visitors coming from all around our community to come and enjoy that park. Other things that we've done, most recently this spring, we rehabilitated the Rotary Edible Garden that's located in the park. We have now built and installed with the help of Hubble's the steel culverts that were donated to them and installed on a very rainy day last spring to improve our Rotary Edible Garden. Other projects that we're working on right now, we're fundraising for the library and community work. We often work on a needs assessment basis so we can contact and collaborate with our community partners, find out what they feel the community needs, and we work to make that happen. Right now, we're fundraising for a privacy pod for the library and we're also working on trying to fundraise for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which if families enroll their children, would provide a free book a month for toddlers up to the age of five for every registered child mailed to their home every month. We're working on some more projects. Things that we'd like to do include in the future, we've been talking with the Morning Star Mission and Palace and of course Habitat for Humanity. And we're in the early stages right now of exploring whether and how we might add to the affordable housing stock in Napanee. What we're good at, to summarize, our club has established a pretty good reputation, I think, a pretty solid record in doing things in Napanee. We've got them done by excelling at three different things. We can find the money, we can organize our members and our friends, and we can put it all together to get things done. The one single overarching factor that has impacted everything we've accomplished is our ability to galvanize like minded partners and collaborate effectively to achieve big projects. As you notice, we're ninety nine years old this year, which means next year is our centennial. We'd like you to consider putting our skills and energy to use to help with the project that the town is already working on and which we believe can become part of our big next thing, the celebration of our one hundredth year in Napanee. We know that the town has started the process of revitalizing the Town Hall and Market Square. We know there's a committee, a partnership agreement with the chamber and a plan. We've been told that the plan might include adding a structure at some point in the future. We'd like to explore with the town the possibility that this plan could be accelerated with our help. Although it was well before our time, there used to be a thriving farmer's market behind the Town Hall, but it's a parking lot today. These photos show the changes from eighteen seventy at the bottom to nineteen twelve in the postcard on top left and a photo taken on a recent Friday afternoon. Vendors at the new market on Saturdays replaced these cars with a bunch of pop up tents, but it still looks like a parking lot and has been for many years. We'd like to see if we can help contribute to making some serious improvements to make this a successful market. But what kind of improvements? Well, we have pictures for that too. One of our club members went out to see what's on offer around here. There's plenty of parks and parking lots and empty fields used, all with temporary structures that come and go each week. Others have some sort of a permanent structure. These things range from a tiny pavilion that could anchor a weekly market market in a park like this one in Deserano or a similar one in Bath on Sundays, or this large palace in Picton, that one has been there since the eighteen eighties. An equally old one is on the lower left, the old Byward Market Hall has been filled with indoor shops and awning roof added around the outside and stalls all around. Some places have larger tents, others have a permanent roof that sometimes still needs a tent or an awning to complement it. Here's a long permanent shelter where the vendors back in. I zoomed in on the right side there where you can see there's a plaque with the name of donors and sponsors who helped pay for the municipal pocket building. This one's not too far down Bellevue Road. It's about ten meters short at the end of Bellevue Road. Here's the best one that we found locally in in terms of a functional multi use design. It's still a parking lot, six days a week, but on Saturdays, the vendors can back in, sell in the shade and shelter on the other side of the awning. There's power, lights, everything a vendor needs and still room for other tents and pop ups and other vendors to join in. Now, we're going down a little bit further down the road here in some of our favorite markets. We've got the covered market in Oxford up in the upper right. That photo shows some of the new bits from the nineteenth and twentieth centuries, new, that have been added to the sixteenth century. Bits in the back. And then clockwise from there, we have the Mercado San Anton in Madrid, Pike's Place in Seattle, Barcelona's La Buqueria and the Salisbury Poultry Market. Except for the five hundred year old stonework, it kind of looks like Deserano, doesn't it? These markets weren't built in a day, but instead developed over hundreds of years or just a hundred in Seattle. Our market square doesn't seem to have changed much in a hundred and seventy years, and we're not sure exactly what's planned right now. But we are of the view that there's lots of opportunity in the Napanee Rotary Club to help out. We have planning, fundraising, and with the building of a permanent legacy for our town and our club. The Rotary Club of Napanee is officially seeking to work with Town Council and staff and with the Market Square Advisory Committee to develop plans and fundraise for a structure to be erected outside the back of Town Hall on the portion of the property off Center Street. Providing a covered awning or roof over the section that is earmarked for the farmer's market would be our Rotary Club's gift to the town to underscore our club's centennial in twenty twenty six. And while we chat about next steps, we invite you to come and join us anytime. We meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month at the Loaf and Ale. And now I'd be happy to answer any questions or maybe expand on any other points I've made. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Cynthia, and a wonderful presentation. Just hang tight and we'll see if there are any questions or comments from council. Does council have any questions or comments? Counsel, I knew you would, Mike, because I think you may, you may have had this discussion earlier a few months ago. So go ahead.
I think it's a fantastic idea, especially when you have a local club. A hundredth anniversary. We've done a lot into this community or we've done a lot for this building. There's more to be done in this building. And to have a a community partner to help us along the way and we help you along the way and any way we can help. And to make the downtown more invitable. You know, you know how hot a summer it is and for the chamber and for people to go ahead and sell their product in an open sun with a small little tent. That's not conducive for business. It's not conducive for the municipality. It's not good conducive for having, you know, a farmer's market be, you know, proactive. So I think it's a great idea that you're doing and I'd support it one hundred percent. So I would make the motion that they would, that the CIO and Chris and whoever needs to be done to sit down with them on the second and third, fourth of every month to find out, to come up with an idea and what the plan is and see what we can do.
Thanks, Mike. And I will come back to for motion. Unfortunately, I think the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month, we may be here, but.
You're more than welcome. Thank you.
You may have to take me, Mike. So is there any other questions or comments for Cynthia with respect to, I I think it's a wonderful idea too, Mike. I agree with you. So is there any other questions of council before we let Cynthia go? I know we've kind of kept you here a little longer than you probably figured, but I think it was well worth it. So. Counselor Hicks?
Thank you through your worship. I don't know if it's actually a question directed to you, but maybe towards finance. But with this influx of money, donated money, that would bolster our chances, I think, for grant funding. Would it not for the exterior of Market Square? I I'm just, I'm sort of, I'm putting Nathan on the spot, but I'm, when I opened the agenda and I saw this, I was, yeah, bouncing around the kitchen going, oh, my gosh, this is exciting. So, yeah, if Nathan, you could answer that maybe.
Through your worship, it looks like Matthew is.
I think I think Mr. Grant can weigh in on that.
Thanks, Matthew.
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So what I would say to you, Counselor Hicks, is the more partnerships that we are able to enter. Counselor Hicks, is the more partnerships that we are able to enter into with other organizations and community groups, the more buckets of funding open up to us as a municipality, whether it be heritage funding, partnership funding, you know, community partnership funding. So I would say that, yes, it would likely enable us to apply for different pods that we wouldn't be able to apply for on our own.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing none, I, I know, Cynthia, we may have had the conversation with respect. I think this is an absolutely wonderful idea. We, being a small municipality, really can't function without the assistance of service clubs such as, such as a Rotary Club and many others. And I think it's admirable that your organization thought of us to invest in our downtown and our downtown core and our Market Square, which I think is going to be revitalized here in the not-too-distant future. And I know we do have a member of our Market Square Committee at the back who seems to be smiling a lot in the last few minutes. So I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's a venture that we can't afford not to take a look at and to investigate. And I agree with Counsel Schenk that I think we need to do this, and then we'll involve staff to work out some of the details, and we'll also include our Market Square Committee, because I know they've done a lot of work in the Market Square, a lot of thoughts going on. I'm sure they have some good ideas, too, that they may want to evolve. And it's really refreshing to see a bunch of folks come together and make something that's happened, and I think it's just absolutely wonderful. So thank you for bringing this to us, and we'll look for a motion. I believe we'll look for a motion to receive the information of the deputation from the Rotary Club of Napanee. "Advocate that Council direct staff to work with the Rotary Club to develop a memorandum of understanding regarding the proposed centennial project of a covered market space in Market Square and report back to Council for approval." Are we good with that, Counsel Schenk? Counselor Hicks? Is there any other questions or comments that anyone else would have? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion's carried. Thanks again, Cynthia, and it's a really exciting time. I really think it's going to be, it's going to be really cool. So thank you.
Thank you, your worship and counselors. Thank you.
Next up, we have the deputations items on the agenda. I don't believe we have any. We don't have any correspondence for items on the agenda, and we're going to get into some unfinished business. So first matter up is the growth infrastructure, corporate land registry, and surplus property identification. And I think Mr. Nobes, you're going to speak to that?
Thank you, worship, and through you to Council. So if I could take Council back to June 26, when we had a very special, special session of Council to discuss the identification of surplus lands and discuss, you know, other properties that were of interest to staff and wanted to highlight to Council. This is in follow-up to that, so this was intended to be discussed in July. However, we were not able to get to that, so here it is as unfinished business. What is on the agenda this evening is ultimately the list of surplus lands that staff are recommending that Council declare as surplus. We added a minor amendment to the recommendation that compared to what was on the agenda for the July meeting, and that's to clarify that this list on this agenda is deemed the full and complete list. So if there are any lingering resolutions of other lands that our staff are not aware of or Council are not truly aware of, this would be the definitive list, and any other lands would be removed effectively from that, from the list, or their previous resolutions would have no force in effect. So we went through every piece of property that the town owned that warranted having a discussion about. So staff are recommending that the list on this agenda be the final list, and I will just highlight a couple of changes from the June meeting where we had the working session. So in that meeting, we discussed the property on Hamley Road, and the question was around whether this was in vicinity to the former landfill. That's been removed, so it's not recommended as surplus. We're working to determine the exact location of the former landfill relative to this property. We have some historic aerial imagery that we've been able to source, but we need a little bit more detail from those and different dates to really drill down into exactly where that was. So for the time being, we've removed it from the list, not intending to move on that property and just leave it as non-surplus land. The second properties that we are recommending removing are the Bayview Drive properties. That is because the title to these properties remains extremely unclear due to a number of easements and registrations on those properties in favor of other lands on their title. So it's extremely convoluted in how the lands that the town owns, in addition to other lands that abut the water on Bayview Drive. Those properties are encumbered by easements that are registered on the title to other lands that are not on the water. It's a strange way that interests in land were conveyed previously, so we're looking to work through those matters before ultimately listing those properties as surplus land. They're great pieces of property. We'd like to see them develop, but until we can clarify those items, we think it's just best to remove them from the list. And the small piece of property on Big Creek Road adjacent to Smith Road that seemed to have a groundwater spring on it, we've removed that from the list until we can get some more time just to investigate that. But by and large, the balance of the properties that were discussed at June 26, I took Council's direction and ultimately made the final recommendation for land surplus in Class 1 versus Class 2, and I think that's reflective of what's on the agenda this evening. At a future meeting, I'm looking to bring forward the land listing and disposition strategy, so that'll help guide Council and staff in identifying which properties to list when, what sort of opportunities Council can have to leverage those lands versus, compared to what types of uses we would like to see on those lands, or potential for swapping of land, that piece for another piece. It would highlight those criteria for staff and Council to consider in making ultimate decisions. And the last piece that I just wanted to touch on briefly was, staff are looking for delegated authority to enter into listing agreements with the Realtors of Record. So this is just a matter of engaging each Realtor to act on behalf of the town and list at a certain price, list each property at a certain price. All decisions and offers would come back to Council for consideration and negotiation. So it's really just authorization to get a property onto the market. It's not explicitly clear in existing bylaws or resolutions, so we're looking to add that as an item in the resolution this evening. And secondary to that is, staff are looking for delegated authority to enter into lease agreements with local farm operators on vacant lands. So we've had a number of older lease agreements that have not been operating, I'll say. So some lands are tied up with a lease agreement with a farmer who's not actively farming the land. We would like to have the opportunity to have another farm operator approach us. We could then convey the interest of another party to the existing operator or holder of that lease, see if they're interested. If they're not interested in farming that land, we could go with the new interested party. We have a number of pieces of land that would benefit from this, and we'd have the added benefit that our land is being taken care of, and we don't have to worry about cutting the grass. So we would look for a nominal rent per se and look to enter into an agreement that protects the town's rights and interests in that land ultimately. So those are the two items that staff are looking for delegated authority to enter into those lease agreements, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that Council might have.
Great. Thanks, Michael. Go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
I'll move staff recommendation, but I have one question. How many acres is there for farmland?
Ballpark, I'd say 50 to 60 in that kind of range. Like, we have, for example, on the cemetery, Riverside? Yeah, Riverside Cemetery, there's quite an amount of farmland there. I want to say it's in the 15-ish acre range. We have 20 acres on Jim Kimit Boulevard. We have 12-ish on Van Louven Road.
That shall, no, I'm sorry. Have to hold the button down. Is that shallow soil there? Because I know that the one by the cemetery would be probably fairly deep, but the one on Van Louven and the one on Jim Kimit is that depth soil. It's the only reason why I'm saying this in public is because anybody who's watching it and farmers aren't harvesting right now, so they're going to start yakking, saying, well, there's not, you know, there's 50 acres there. So you might have some farmers come in and say, hey, you know, we'll give you this much an acre.
Yeah, we do have interest on that property, in particular the Van Louven Road property. Okay. So I think some have been, there was a former lease agreement on that property as well. It was farmed, and the current holder of that lease is no longer interested in exercising that. So we have had another farm operator approach us about using that property, but yes, in that ballpark, around 40, 50 maybe, acres.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Schenk, and I'll be right back to you for a motion. So is there anything else before we look for a motion? Seeing none, we do, Counselor Schenk, staff recommendation, the Council received for information, growth, infrastructure, surplus, property identification, land disposals strategy, update report, and further that Council declares surplus, the list of lands identified within the staff report, and further that Council deemed this list of surplus properties to be definitive surplus listing for the town and all prior surplus declarations where the property has been transferred or are deemed no longer in effect until a new declaration is made by Council, and further that Council directs staff to issue a formal public notice as required under the land sale bylaw regarding lands declared as surplus, and further that Council delegate authority to the general manager of growth and infrastructure, the authority to enter into land listing agreements for sale of municipal lands with the town's real estate agents of record, and further that Council delegate authority to the general manager of growth and infrastructure, the authority to approve lease agreements with local farm operators on a first-come, first-served basis for crop production on vacant town land. So we do have a mover in Counselor Schenk. Do we have a secondary in Deputy Mayor Calver? If, is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to that motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, opposed, motion's carried. Next matter is Parks, Recreation, and Culture Youth Wellness Hub, and I see Mr. Brown coming up. So Chris, whenever we get settled in there, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, your worship. So back in May, Council received a deputation from the Greater Napanee Youth Services Coalition, seeking the town's support for a one-year pilot project to establish a youth wellness hub at 12 Market Square. So later, at the second meeting in May, staff brought back a report just to discuss the building at 12 Market Square and look for Council direction. So out of that resolution, Council was still interested in staff continuing those discussions with the Greater Napanee Youth Services, just regarding potential partnership opportunities and exploring alternative locations for the youth wellness hub. And so Council directed staff to provide an update on those discussions at July 22 meeting, which did, we didn't have enough time, so here I am now with my update. So since then, staff have met with the Greater Napanee Youth Services Coalition at the Napanee train station, specifically on the west side of that building. So we wanted to discuss the possibility of using that space to get started with the youth services hub. And I thank Michelle and Shannon, who met me there that day. We, the furniture in there from the program currently leasing that space was a little bit in the way, but we were able to do a little bit of a tour to look at the space. They did inform us that they would be interested in going into that space if it was available. So as I said, the west side of the train station building is currently occupied by the Morning Star Mission's furniture program. So in order to make the youth services hub work at the train station, staff then reached out to Morning Star Mission and their volunteers to find a suitable location to move that furniture program. So looking at all of our options kind of around town, we figured that the best place to start would be the Conservation Park Garage. So we met the Morning Star Mission staff and volunteers at that site, and we toured. The garage is split into a couple different sides. One side's a little bit smaller, easier to heat, and so they said they could make it work a little bit closer to the mission itself. And so with that, I just wanted to provide Council with an update that we will be looking to move the furniture that's in the train station west side right now down to the Conservation Park Garage on September 2, starting around 9:00 a.m. We would like to provide them with some assistance, a couple staff members, a pickup truck, to help facilitate that move. And then once that happens, we'll be giving the train station west side a deep clean and then inviting the Youth Services Coalition to come, look at the space again as a vacant space, and then start to move their stuff in. One thing that we'll want to do is we'll want to make sure that we have facility use agreements drafted and brought back to Council for final approval. So the Morning Star Mission would move their furniture program to the Conservation Park Garage, which is armed, locked cameras, which they were very happy to hear. And then the Youth Services Coalition will then start to move programming into the train station west side. We'll get a nice sign. The east side of the train station will say Via Rail. The west side would have a new sign for this Youth Services Wellness Hub Youth Services Coalition. So exciting stuff. We're happy that we're all, everyone was able to come together and make it work, and I'm thankful for everyone to, that assisted me with meeting me onsite, going over everything, and just being very receptive to moving from the Morning Star and also for the Youth Services Coalition. I do remember a quote that day that was, "We got to start somewhere," and I think this is going to be a really good opportunity. So I'm happy to answer questions that Council has.
Great. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there any questions or comments, Counselor Hicks?
Thank you through you, your worship. I have no questions, Chris, but I would like to say thank you, because I know just how hard and how much, how much, how much hard work you've put into making this happen, and also to the community partners, the Youth Wellness Hub and Morning Star for being flexible. And I think I can say for once, everybody's happy. So I would like to move staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. I'll be right back to you. Counselor Schenk? Okay, well, that's, staff recommendation is moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schenk, which is the Council received for information, Parks, Recreation, and Culture Youth Wellness Hub report, and further that Council directs staff to bring back a facility use agreement for the Greater Napanee Youth Services Coalition at the train station west side, and further that Council directs staff to bring back a facility use agreement for the Morning Star Mission at the Conservation Park Garage. We do have a motion on the floor. Is there any other further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried, and you're absolutely right, Ann. It's kind of nice when the plan comes together, and we've got, you know, we've made two groups happy, so that's good. And I know you've done a lot of hard work on this, Chris, so thank you. So next matter, Parks and Recreation, Culture Service Standards, and I think you're up again, so go ahead.
Yeah, thank you again, your worship. So the Parks, Rec, and Culture Service Standards were first presented to Council June 24. So they have gone unchanged, so we're looking for approval tonight as presented originally. We did have a couple recommendations from the staff that I did want to report back to you and give you some feedback on the costing, and we're just looking for a recommendation for the mayor to consider the staff recommendations in the 2026 budget. So those two recommendations were, one, to limit the amount of grass cutting completed by park staff by contracting out some of those properties. The second one was extending the seasonal employment by an additional month for the two seasonal employees. So just going over the first one, what we wanted to do, what's important to us is that we still want our park staff cutting those properties that people are going and enjoying outdoor spaces. So things like the community parks, the neighborhood parks, the parkettes, sports fields, municipal facility properties and cemeteries. We still want our team taking care of those and taking pride in those. We did identify several properties that we cut that are solely based on beautification and making sure that Center Street looks clean and cut and that things aren't growing up on the side of the road. So those are areas where we felt that we could gain some time capacity back in the department if we were to contract those out. So we did go out to a local landscaping contractor just for a budget quote. At this price of $20,000, we would have to go out for requests for quotations, receive several offers, and look at those and evaluate. quotations, receive several offers, and look at those and evaluate those. But the thing about this is that it would be a contracted season, so it would be from May till October. So you're always going to risk seasons like we just had where it gets dry, and you're not actually cutting a lot of grass this time of year anyway. So it, wages alone, it would, it would cost us about $10,400 to do it ourselves just in wages. But that is making the assumption that we are cutting it every week right through till October, which in a hot, dry summer like this, we are not cutting it every week. So you have to take that with a little bit of grain of salt. Still like to consider this, although after hearing the amount, the budget quote, the amount that we would have to budget for it, I'm not sure the cost makes sense based on the amount of time it would save our team, which is about eighteen man-hours a week. So I'm happy to answer questions on that after I get through the second one. So the second one is the budget request to extend the two seasonal staff by an additional month, works out to approximately $11,000. So again, that's two seasonal staff that normally would have been May till the end of October. We're looking to have them start a month earlier in April and go to the end of October. With that, again, we're just looking for a recommendation to have the mayor consider these recommendations, but we are looking to approve the service standard as originally presented and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Is there any questions or comments for Chris with respect to his presentation or the report that's in front of us? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the Parks and Recreation Culture Service Standards report, in further that council approved the Parks Recreation and Culture Service Standards as presented, and further that council recommend the mayor to consider staff recommendations in the 2026 budget. Mover and a seconder? Moved by Councilor Hicks, seconded by Councilor Shank. Yep, go ahead, Councilor Shank.
It just says to consider. You know what I mean? Based, you know, based on the season, you know what I mean? So we could throw everything in the pot and then see where the pot is and then start kicking things out or leaving things in.
We'll see how...
No offense, Chris, don't get me wrong.
See how overflow the pot gets. Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, Mike. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we do have a motion on the floor. We'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Executive Services, Madam Clerk, 2026 Municipal Election Report Number Two. Sorry, Jessica, go ahead.
Through your worship, it has been a while since we did our community consultation on this, but we were looking to get some initial community feedback about how people felt about our continuing our past use of internet voting, which is what we have done for the past ten years and is what our bylaw currently says we will do in 2026 unless council directs differently. You do have until May to change course on that if you would like to. So general trends, there was a majority of survey feedback was that internet voting is highly convenient and accessible for people. There is a growing trend in Ontario. Every year, there are more and more municipalities that go that direction. I also recognize that in other parts of the country, there's a strong move towards hand-counted paper ballots only for elections. And so truly whichever option council directs us to go is what staff will implement. I will just note that I personally would not recommend a hybrid option, because if your concern is that people will not trust the results of a internet voting, there is no point doing a hybrid election. It just costs you twice as much with a result that half of your electors still will not like, or maybe not half. But anyway, if there's any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any questions or comments for Jess? Seeing, go ahead, Councilor Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. Jessica, I noted, thank you for the report. I'm definitely in favor of phone and internet. If I'm not mistaken, last time, there was someone available during a certain period of time to assist within person, like there was a computer set up, assistance is available. The voters list. Can we, when, when, my concern is the voters list was an absolute disaster, I thought, last time, based on the AMO and that. So now we're using tax rolls? Is this, we're using our own information to come up with the voters list, like driver's license and actual legal address? Because it's not just property owners, it's the residents as well. But when do we start advertising that people need to be looking into this to make sure that they're on the voters list? Because I don't think enough notice was given last time.
So through your worship, we will be, we can start advertising now for people to check their information. So the change is that now the voters list lives with Elections Ontario. So if you voted in the last provincial election, that information will be there for the next municipal election. I can say that the election portal for correcting address issues, it is much easier to identify the errors. There definitely are still some errors where there is conflicting information with MPAC. The, in the old voters list, your error rate was highest with your tenants, people who didn't own the property. Now your errors, people who own property but don't live here will need to be more intentional about making sure they get added to the voters list. But we will certainly advertise it a lot more extensively. It's very easy to get yourself added to it and get your information changed. And we know that if we are going to carry on with internet voting, it is, it is crucial that we have an accurate voters list before those information letters go out.
I'd like to move staff recommendation to continue with internet and phone voting.
Great, thank you, Councilor Hicks. We have a mover with respect to the staff recommendation. Do we have a seconder? Seconder is Councilor Norrie. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the report or the presentation that's in front of us? Go ahead, Councilor Shank.
So you can still go to whatever hall that you've always got to and still vote that way, correct?
Yeah, so through your worship, we will definitely, on election day, we will be at the Bestin Bash Arena all day. We will also have, so last election, we did this at Twelve Market Square. This election, we'll set something up at Ninety-Nine Advance for a good window of time. And I think it was well received. We did an evening out at Roblin Hall and at South Fred Hall. And I think we'll plan to do that again, just for the residents. We'll shift the hours a little bit based on when people were showing up last time, but I think it was worth doing, and we'll plan to do that again.
Thank you, because you can do pros and cons on all items. I'm still from the old school where you came in with identification, they get it in, and you marked it off, and you did your vote. All right. Now, I have three kids that are going to university, they're gone, and I got three votes. And myself, oh, my wife's working. Here we go. My wife phones and says, hey, there we go. And then, you know how many people have told me that, oh, by the way, I just voted five times. You know what I mean? Which is totally illegal. All right. But when you're, that's the reason why I, I don't know. It's, yeah, I know. But how many people have ever been charged with that? So the point is, is that, that's the reason why I still believe that you should go to the place, unless, you know what I mean, and put your X on, and then you could be, a scrutineer could take it out. Then it voids all that. But that's not the way it goes anymore.
Now, we, we're definitely moving in a different direction. So is there anything else before we call for the vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. And we're going to take a ten-minute break. I missed our legislative break about fifteen minutes ago, Madam Clerk, but we're going to do it now.
Great, welcome back everyone. We're moving on through the agenda. Next up is Executive Services Short Term Accommodations. Madam Clerk, I think this is yours, so go ahead.
So through your worship, it has been a little over a year since we last talked about this. Unfortunately, our department had to pivot our efforts to focus on encampments. Pretty shortly after the last time we spoke about this, but at this point, we are looking for council's direction on. Is this a priority for staff to address within the remainder of your term? And if it is, we will begin focusing more efforts in that area immediately. And if it is not, we will set this aside for the remainder of this term. Based on what we heard last time, our understanding is that. If we're going to regulate this, it would be in a way that is broadly supportive, not overly burdensome, particularly on those smaller operators where they live on site. The proposed fee structure would be scaled to have the highest fees for non-hosted short-term accommodations that run year-round. The basis for that would be that we know that those are the ones that drive the highest volume of nuisance calls. And we have much lower complaint and inspection and follow-up needs on those ones where the owner lives on site. So that's, that's the reasoning for that. We would also look to. Use a number of different tools to address enforcement issues. And we would focus our main costs at this point. Now, we believe. The main costs will be in, in setting this whole thing up, getting everybody registered, doing all the necessary background inspection works. And we believe the assistance of some summer students to assist our building, fire, and bylaw departments in collecting a lot of this information. Would be sufficient to get this program off the ground. We would probably, depending on council's direction, a lot of municipalities phase in rental fees. There's a year of education. Letting everyone know this is coming, getting everybody ready to get signed up, and then you start collecting license fees that would put us in an unfortunate budget situation where it's all. Costs, no revenues in your first year. You could also look at a 50% license fee for the first year, and it doesn't come into effect until the summer. Few different options here, but anyway, main question tonight is, are we on the right track? And is this something you want to do this term?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Who wants to start? Mr. Grant?
So just to add to the clerks for members of council. Should council wish to go down the short-term accommodation route, we can certainly do that. It would be my intention to reprioritize some of the things on Legislative Services' work plan. Including the mandate letter to make readjustments to make room for this item. I would bring that back at a later date if that's the will of council, but I just wanted to level set expectations that I. I would have to swap something out in order to put this in.
Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
You only have. Basically, you don't, don't even have a year because you lame duck the council. What I've always thought was, if I go to Toronto, I go to any city and stay in a hotel, I pay a municipal accommodation tax. All right? So what I would do for the, for the remainder of this term is your Hilton, your, you know, your big hotels. Anything like that, you know what I mean? Where you have, you know, multiple, that's their place of business. That's what it is. You do, they pay the municipal tax. Everywhere in Ontario, if you go to any hotel, I don't know one place that I have stayed that I've never paid that. Go after that. We will revisit because you had less than 10 statistically by law infractions on short-term accommodations. I just had an individual, even though we had a burn ban and I have a short-term or. An Airbnb where somebody was letting fireworks off there the other day. So I had a talk with them. So I understand that there's, there's infractions on that side. But for the simplicity of what we have and what we have left in our term and the workload that we already currently doing. So I would just go ahead and just go after the, put the short to the municipal accommodation tax on the large. You know, the hotels and motels that way because it's a standard form that everybody have to pay. And then the next term, they can. Whoever's elected, they can go ahead and revisit the short-term accommodation for the Airbnbs and that.
Thanks, thanks, Counselor Shank. Is Counselor Norrie?
I have to agree with that side of the room. Start small, start with the mat tax. And because we don't want to type our clerk and clerks, they're still working on our, we're doing our bylaws from 1846. So they have a lot of work to go there. And then we can let next term accounts, but I agree with the mat taxes. I'd traveled a lot and let's be honest, it's like $4. Something like that. It's very minimal on rooms and it's, it does help with future growth or future. Of our town, like as far as advertising for it and so on. So I think we start basic, small, start with mat tax for the existing hotels or motels, however you want to word it and. And then let out when they finish their 1862 bylaws, they can look into that.
Thank you, Counselor Norrie. Counselor Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. So I'm going to help Jessica out. So I think. We'll have to take a vote on this particular topic, but I think I would like to, whatever the motion is, add in there that we need to investigate. What's involved with contacting and motels and hotels in Greater Nappany. And getting the mat tax implemented and collecting the money. And there will have to be a conversation with our regional, our marketing board. Based on the provincial legislation, 50% of it has to go to regional marketing board. But the money that stays here is desperately needed and a lot of good can be done with garbage cans. That is one thing that comes to mind. I'd like to see two garbage cans before the next election. So. If, if that's where we're going, then I, I would move that we table short-term accommodation until the next term. Take it right off the table.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. I ain't gonna task Madam Clerk with administrative things that we do have a resolution with respect to this, do we not, Madam Clerk?
Through your worship, you do. It was from April of 2024, so council is able to reconsider. A matter, let me just double check the bylaw whether after a year has gone by, it actually requires a motion to reconsider or whether it can just be introduced as new business.
I know that we've been talking about short-term accommodations for two terms of council because I think Counselor Norrie actually brought it up in the last term when I was sitting over there, so. As Madam Clerk is doing some searching, go ahead Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Thank you through your worship. So I'm seeing the fee base here. Of what we'd be looking at for licensing. I mean, it's not out of line, but it almost, to me, doesn't appear to be enough. Looking at, you know, what it would cost to implement it versus what we'd collect. I think we probably should look at our, our fees going up a little bit.
So through your worship, if I may speak to that, I do know previous times that this was raised. Members of council expressed concerns that whatever we do would not be overly burdensome to small operators, people who are renting out a room in their house or people who are. You know, using, using this as a way to make sure that they can keep a cottage property in their family. So that was why we structured the proposed fee the way that we did, but obviously all of this is. Is up to council to, to determine what you would want to do. That was just a starting point for a discussion.
I'm just reading the, the one that's in the report is, is 14124. I'm just going by that, that. Council received the information short-term accommodation report and further that council direct staff to continue to investigate and consult with the community. Oh, sorry, I didn't. Is the mat thing actually part of this? So to have the mat conversation, we probably should. Either do it by way of notice of motion or ask staff to. Put a report on with respect to that, I'm guessing, just because it's not really related to the conversation that we should be having, if I'm not mistaken.
To expedite this council meeting because it's getting late, I totally concur with you. So we'll table this. And because we already have enough on our works right now for the rest of this term and bring back to the next meeting, the mat tax, all right? Municipal accommodation tax that we can review it. We've had time to look at it. We've already had time to discuss it. And what the fees were, and I think there's just a straight fee anyway that other municipalities do. And I think it'd be less. With economic, because with the short term, there's, we could discuss that till there's blue in the face and that's not going to happen tonight. So let's just table this one and go ahead and. Do the mat taxes the next meeting.
Thanks, Counselor. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
So through your worship, the motion in April 2024 was that council receive for information municipal accommodation tax report and further that council direct. That a municipal accommodation tax not be implemented at this time. I don't believe that that would require. Because it's not a very specific motion. I don't think you'd need a motion to reconsider in order to at this point now request. If council wanted to pass a motion that says not interested in short-term accommodations during this term, but we would like another report back about municipal accommodation tax. I think that that would be.
I'll second.
I'll move.
Okay, just, we're going to put a motion on the floor. Just go ahead, Madam Clerk, if you can. Put that motion for us where you can understand it. We'll, if you're going to put a motion on the floor, put a motion on the floor and then we can have a discussion about it, but I'd like to know what the motion that we're putting on the floor is before we actually have the discussion on it. I, I see a lot of hands going up, but I kind of like to know what we're talking about first.
Okay, so through your worship. And again, if, if since mat tax is only indirectly related to this report, it could possibly be a separate motion or a notice of motion for future meeting. So council received information, Executive Services Short Term Accommodations Report, further council directed the implementation of a short-term accommodations licensing system. Is not a priority to complete within the remainder of this term. Your call whether this portion is in order within the scope of this meeting for the council request staff to report back regarding the potential implementation of a municipal accommodation tax.
Mover and seconder. Do you understand what the motion is? And do you want to make that motion? We have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, the motion's carried. Next matter, Financial IT Services Municipal Comparators. Go ahead, Mr. Murphy, you're up.
So through your worship, what we have in front of you is a report on municipal comparators. So this is another piece to us trying to use. Data analysis or data-backed decisions and trying to have some streamlined or some. Comparators in place for all kind of different avenues that we're looking at. So what Ellen has taken a look at here is she's taken 30, 30 municipalities and scored them based on seven criteria. And the list that you see in front of you is the 12 municipalities that it's, that have appeared to be or, or are the best fit for us to compare across multiple. Facets. So we're looking at here, if we're looking at wages or roads or whatever it may be, we use these, these 12 comparators for, for analysis going forward and then trying to. Keep that data set consistent time after time. So when we bring things forward to council, there's, there's some continuity and some familiarity with the other municipalities on how we're doing that. There is alternatives. We can look to, to change some of these if they're not, or if council doesn't see they're fit. Otherwise, we can move forward and start using these as soon as possible.
Great, thanks, Nathan. Is there any questions or comments for Nathan with respect to the report or presentation performed? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Thank you through your worship. So using these comparator lists, I guess as long as we're comparing like, like, like tax base to tax base, I know like. Sometimes we look at the size of the area versus population, whatever, but. You know, when we're doing making financial decisions, it should also be based on tax base because, you know, maybe Midland has a larger tax base than what Nappany is. I don't know. I know if. I don't, I don't see that. But anyways, I just want to make sure that we are using every tool in our toolbox to make sure we're comparing equals.
Yeah, through your worship. So total taxable assessment and tax base composition are both weighted 10% through this scale. And I actually do know Midland off the top of my head because we did discuss that previously. I want to say their tax base was within about 2%. In terms of assessment of ours. So it's very closely aligned. There's some distribution differences, but a very close comparator, and I think it's, it's relatively high on the list. At fourth with us. So that's, that's a very close.
Okay, because I was misunderstood our last meeting when we're talking about some other stuff we can't talk about that. One comparator was quite a bit higher tax base than us. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Is any other questions or comments for Nathan? Counselor Norrie, and then I'll go to Counselor Shank.
Thank you to staff. I, we've been asking for this for years, so I'll move staff recommendation.
Motion on the floor by Counselor Norrie for staff recommendation. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Hicks and Counselor Shank, did you have a question or comment?
No, it's, it's along with the deputy mayor stating. It's just that, you know, when they fill out their FIRs. That they're all fairly comparable, you know what I mean? I want to. Like, if you're going to compare a hockey player, you compare to a really good hockey player, or you're going to play her to the poor one. If you compare to the poor one, even though they might have a good assessment base, but. You know what I mean? I, I'd be a great hockey player, but if I compare myself to somebody like you that can skate, well, I'm the worst freaking guy that could possibly skate. So as long as you've taken that into consideration. It's a similar what the deputy said, then hey, not a problem. I always try to compare myself to somebody who's running a great operation. What are they doing to, what are they doing that much better than what we're doing or how can we always improve? That's all.
Thanks, thanks, Counselor Shank. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a motion on the floor. If there's nothing else, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion's carried. Next matter. Financial IT Services 2026 Strong Mayor Budget Process. And Nathan, you're going to deal with this as well?
Yeah, yeah, through your worship, I may have to lean on the clerk here a little bit as she's quite well versed. Yeah. Yeah. Through your worship, I may have to lean on the clerk here a little bit as she's quite well versed in this. So this is the process. I know this is, this has been a topic a couple of different times at council to date. It really breaks down. There's a flow chart and then one of the pages to break down the sections on timing of everything. And where things fall in line, we've kind of already started into this process in terms of departmental budgets, we've shifted into that as well. And we have received a directive on that to date. So that's where we're at in this. We're starting into the public consultation here shortly and move forward as we have in the past to some degree. But steps in place on how the budget shifts from here on out, it kind of depends on the flow chart and the timing listed below.
Great. Thanks, Nathan. Is there any questions or comments with respect to Nathan's report or his presentation?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Counselor Shank has moved staff recommendation. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Hicks, staff recommendation is that council receive for information, the financial IT services 2026 Strong Mayor's Budget Process Report. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect? Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
Anybody that might be watching this, and there's probably going to be views of this. I understand the whole process of what they're doing. Mayor still be, he's previewing the budget and everything else. It'll still be coming to the budget meeting. We'll still be having our discussions with it. You know what I mean? Areas of concern areas, not what we can do, what we can't do. He's just giving basically the whole floor plan of what we can do, what we can't do, and stuff like this and doing your previous, you know, work. The needs, the wants and the wishes. So you've been at it long enough. So as long as it wishes, you know, and we'll see how it all works out at the end. And there we go. So it's not like representation is not done and it's not a dictatorship by any means. So this is how it's going to be done. This is the legislation and this is how we have to do it. And there's nothing we can say to do about it. We just trust our mayor and everything else. And there's always the avenues, but I don't have any worry about that. So that's, because I know people have discussed this in the public and I'm going, no, no, let's shut this down right away.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Shank. Is there anything else? Seeing none, I think we have a motion that's on the floor. Call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion's carried. Administrative consent agenda, bear with us. It's a fairly lengthy one, but we'll get through it. Council minutes, regular session of council, July 22. Is there anything in those minutes that anyone has any questions, comments, concerns about? Seeing none, committee minutes, municipal heritage committee, market square advisory, waste division, waste diversion committee. Is there anything in those minutes anyone has any comments? And I know that Counselor Martin wants to weigh in. So go ahead, Bill.
I know we're short of time, so I, I just want to touch base on a couple. Both, maybe I could do them both at the same time here. Can I do that?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay. And I also want to mention Culture Days is Saturday 20th of September. Heritage Committee members are going to be going around Market Square in downtown handing out a packet, a form of a, in the form of a gift bag. We're going to have pictures downtown. Size to be determined yet. We've got a placking event going on next door over here at the old fire hall, September the sixth at 11:00 AM. It's the first one of our new, new design plaque system where we're recognizing historical buildings, but they're not designated historical. Waste diversion hazardous waste day, Saturday, September the sixth, from eight AM to two PM at the GIL plant there. Greater Nappany giveaway days is also Saturday, September the sixth. We've got a lot going on September the sixth. Our waste diversion committee wants to set up a waste diversion booth, information booth. We're having some difficulty with because GIL doesn't want anybody out of their cars. So we're going to try to do something, but for now we'll call it an information booth. So we want council's permission to do that. And we're going to be selling composting and blue boxes at the same time. And I think because of the blue box transition, we're going to have, you know, information on what's going to happen at the start of the year. So we wanted to highlight that. Again, all I want to do is highlight Saturday, September sixth, Fire Hall Placking Ceremony at 11:00 AM. Hazardous Waste Day, Saturday, September sixth, eight AM to two PM. Giveaway Day, I haven't mentioned that yet. That's all part of the waste diversion. Saturday, September sixth. So like I say, there's a lot going on Saturday, September the sixth. So I hope the community participates in all of these things. I'll leave it at that to save some time.
I appreciate that, Bill. And it's important that we get, we get that word out. It really is. So I thank you for that. So if there's nothing else, we move on to the correspondence for information items dated August 26. Is there anything in that correspondence? Anything, anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none. Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day. Is there anything in that proclamation anyone had any concerns about or would like to highlight? Seeing none. Council Inquiry Follow-Up Automated Speed Enforcement. Is there anything in that report that anyone had any questions of we would like to speak about? Counselor.
Thank you through your worship, as it was myself that made that inquiry. Community Safety Zone. And I, I mentioned this to staff earlier tonight, not you, Jessica, in particular, but what is involved? What do we need to do? I'd like to talk to the county about two community safety zones. One being County Road Eight from the bottom of the hill to basically the first curve past the school. And the reason for this is there's been a bus route cancellation. So we have children walking on streets with no sidewalks on Alfred, Sarah and James to get to the crossing guard and potentially a new construction build. They could start that at any time, which is going to have heavy equipment. And I really think that this should be a safety zone. And then potentially the county could maybe look at doing automated speed enforcement there. I looked at the criteria and it probably doesn't meet the criteria. But I just really think that we've increased the car traffic now because they've canceled the bus because the students can't walk to school because there's no place for them to walk. I know that's a tri board transportation issue, but it's just a confluence of events that I just don't have a good feeling about at that particular location. And also County Road 41, also known as Center Street from the top of the bridge at Dairy or north at Dairy Ave from the lights down to the lights at Bridge Street should also be a community safety zone. And I think speed enforcement there would also be of benefit. There's actually, I've had people pass me when I'm doing fifty and they have to be doing at least seventy-five, eighty. And it's, it's not safe. So I would like to follow up on this.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. I'm going to refer to Madam Clerk. I know that we've dealt with community safety zones at the county level in the past. With particular, I think it was Loyalist Township, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm just going by memories, but maybe Madam Clerk can clarify it for us.
So yeah, through your worship, within this term, Loyalist Township had a staff report where they had a recommendation to implement community safety zones. And then they referred that report to the county because it required county approval for any community safety zones on county roads. And I I believe the TAC Working Group would be the place to start that request. I think this would require a motion from council to direct staff to, to bring that, bring that report on a, a community safety zone on County Road Eight and Forty-One. And then that would need to be adopted by council here and referred to county council.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Are you suggesting that we do that by way of motion this evening? Or is that something that can be brought back on another evening?
Through your worship, to do that this evening, we would need to pull that item out of the consent agenda and then deal with that later, or it could also be brought back to a future meeting.
We could bring it back September ninth, if that's possible.
That would be my suggestion that we bring. I'm not sure what the agenda looks like at this point for September ninth, but I would suggest that it probably has to look better than what this evening's agenda looks like right now.
I would agree, your worship.
Madam Clerk, do you need any other direction other than that? Are we good with that?
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Delegated Authority Memo Town Hall Steps. Is there anything in that report that anyone had any concerns or questions or comments about? Seeing none, moving on to Executive Services Community Initiatives Fund Timelines and Process. Anything in that report anyone had any comments or questions about? Seeing none, Growth and Infrastructure Automotive Materials Stewardship Program Amended Agreement. Is there anything in that report that anyone had any questions, comments or concerns about? Growth and Infrastructure Springside Meadows Subdivision Draft Plan of Subdivision Request. Anything in that report anyone has any questions, comments, concerns about? Towne Greater Nappany Blue Box Transition Report Number Six, Update on Non-Eligible Sources. Anything in that report anyone had any comments, questions or concerns about? Seeing none, Boards and Advisory Committees Monthly Report for August of 2025. Anything in that report anyone had any comments, questions or concerns about? Seeing none, the Fire Department Activity Report, July and August 2025. Anything in that report anyone had any questions? Seeing none, Growth and Infrastructure Activity Report 2025. Anything in that report anyone had any comments or questions about? Seeing none. Activity Report Executive Services August of 2025. Anything in that report anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none, Financial IT Services Activity Report August 2025. Anything in that report for Financial Services? Anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none, Parks Recreation and Culture Activity Report August of 2025. Anything in that report anyone had any comments or questions about? The Seeing None Access E11 Report July 2025. Anything in the E11 Report? Anyone had any questions or comments about? Seeing none. So we'll be looking for a motion. The council consent to the routine approval of the following items that the minutes, the regular session of council dated July 22. July 22, 2025 be adopted as presented. The Municipal Heritage Committee Market Square Advisor Greenie Waste Diversion Committee Minutes of July 10th of August 14, 2025 be received for information that the correspondence for information items dated August 26, 2025 be received. That council endorsed the proclamation of the Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Day. That council received for information, the Council Inquiry Follow-Up to the Automated Speed Enforcement Report. The council received for information, the Memorandum of Delegated Authority Under the Procurement Policy Bylaw. That council approved the official intake and decision-making timelines for the Community Initiatives Fund. That council agreed that no recommendations from the Community Initiatives Fund Advisory Committee shall exceed the funds dedicated to a particular funding round. Council agreed to divide the intake fund into two equal parts with funds not allocated in one round to be automatically carried over to another round. The council received for information, the Growth Infrastructure Automotive Materials Stewardship Program Amended Agreement Report. And further, the council approved the Automotive Materials Stewardship Program Amended Agreement and authorizes mayor and clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the town. The council received for information, the Growth Infrastructure Springside Meadows Subdivision Draft Plan of Subdivision Request Report. And further, the council deemed draft plan of subdivision PLS S U B D 2021-011 as amended by council on July 23, 2024 not to have lapsed on August 9, 2025. And further, that council revised the lapsing date to August 26, 2030. Let council receive for the information, the Towne Greater Nappany Blue Box Transition Report Number Six, Update on Non-Eligible Sources. That council received for information, the Boards Advisory Committees Monthly Report for August 2025 and that the Activity Reports of Growth and Infrastructure Executive Services, Fire Department Parks Rec, Culture, Recreation and Culture and Financial IT Services for the month of August 2025 and the E Access E11 Report for July 2025. Items nine point one three through nine point one eight be received for information. Moved by Counselor Shank. Seconded by, I knew there's one in every crowd, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motion's carried. We've still got a few minutes. Where are we here? We're going to get this next item in because it's one that we have to do. And then we're going to have a discussion whether we want to go past 10 o'clock, but we are moving ahead at fairly light speed here. So I'll, I'll ask that question here shortly. Ten point one, Executive Services Declaration of Vacant Counselor Seat. Madam Clerk, are you going to speak to this one?
So through your worship, under the municipal act, council is required to pass a motion to declare the seat vacant. The report indicates an option to defer that declaration to the next meeting. Given the council's now meeting again tomorrow, that's not applicable. We do need to do this tonight. But all other business related to any transitional matters will be addressed at the September ninth meeting.
Thank you for recommendation.
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselor Shank. And thank you, Counselor Hicks, for moving and seconding the recommendation that council received for information, the Executive Service Declaration of the Vacant Counselor Seat Report. And further, that pursuant to section 262 of the municipal act, council declare the seat of Ward Three Counselor vacant effect of August 26, 2025. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion. Opposed, motion's carried. Is there an appetite to move past 10 o'clock? If not, we are going to have to adjust our schedule. There's, I think, one more matter on here, Madam Clerk, that is a little bit time sensitive. Am I correct there?
Yeah. So through your worship, the Community Preparedness Grant needs to be dealt with tonight. Again, I will just note any items that we defer just makes our September ninth agenda that much worse.
I, I'm sensing that we'll look for a motion to go past 10 o'clock, moved by Deputy Mayor Cowher, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motion's carried. And thanks, folks. I think, I think we can do this. So next matter, residential real estate agent of record agreement. Mr. Nobles, I think you're going to speak to that.
Thank you worship and through you to council. Following up on the July 22 meeting of council where council awarded the residential real estate agent of record RFP to KB Realty. Council requested that staff reach out to a secondary agent of record based on the scoring criteria that was presented at that meeting. And that a draft agreement be prepared and presented to council for, for between KB Realty and the town. So the agreement is on the agenda. And I can note that McIntyre and Company have agreed to be the alternate listing agent when and if a conflict of interest were to arise with KB Realty. So they have graciously accepted that alternate seat. So this agreement that's on the agenda, the, the points that council had interest in were how we would mitigate conflicts of interest and items eight point one through eight point three specifically deal with this in the agreement itself. So the, the vendor would need to declare any potential conflict as defined within, within the agreement. And the town would have the ability to engage McIntyre and Company to undertake that listing on behalf of the town in the, in place of KB Realty if that instance were to occur. So more or less everything that council was looking for from July is, is contained within this agenda. And I would be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Great. Thanks, Michael. Is there any questions or comments for Michael with respect to this? Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
So not to labor this, the point is, is you got a 24-month contract with the option for a 24-month extension. So what happens after 24 months and both parties are not happy?
Through your worship, so if after 24 months or before, if either party's not happy, they can advise the, the other party that they're looking to cancel the agreement. The town has the full and unfettered discretion to, to cancel that agreement prematurely if we so choose at no, at no penalty. And that's built into the agreement itself. If everybody's happy at the end of the 24 months and council wants to renew for another term up to 24 months, if you want to do 12, you can do 12. Um, if you want to do 12, you can do 12 or eight, any, any variation that's, that's baked in.
Okay, thanks, uh, thanks, Counselor Shank. Thank you, uh, Mr. Nobes. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information that Growth Infrastructure Residential Real Estate Agent and Record Agreement Report. And further, the council authorized the mayor and the clerk to execute the agreement with KB Realty Inc. for the residential land real estate services. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Next matter, Parks Recreation Culture Passive Park Rental Fees. And Mr. Brown, you're up.
Uh, thank you, worship. So if you recall, on July 22nd, council received a deputation from Cora Wright from Pegasus Movement Academy. Um, that deputation um, explained that Pegasus Movement Academy is a business that hosts parkour classes in passive park space. Uh, in town specifically Conservation Park and Rotary Park. Um, so council received a staff report later on that same evening uh, with the recommendation to introduce a new facility rental category for the passive park commercial use uh, space so that for-profit businesses could rent the park space and conduct classes and/or programming. Um, as part of the booking process, the permit holder would be required to show proof of insurance, naming the Towne Greater Nappany as additional insured and agree to the general terms and conditions for facility rentals. Um, the staff report uh, that night recommended a fee of $25 per hour. So council approved in principle the creation of the new uh, facility rental category of passive uh, park commercial sport use and directed staff to report back with some options uh, for fees. And so um, what I've done here is I've evaluated similar Towne Greater Nappany programming and rental rates as well as some other municipal uh, rates from the area, just for whatever uh, other municipalities are charging for passive park space. Um, so what I, what I tried to do here was uh, give council a few different options in terms of how we would charge the fees. Um, option A looks at a per participant per session uh, fee, which is very similar to our skating programs um, at the arena. So um, this would give a little bit of uh, freedom to the business owner um, to um, basically if their classes weren't full or they had low participation, they could still um, offer those uh, services to um, you know, adults, senior, youth, and children. Um, the second option looks at a more of a per hour, which is similar to our facility rentals like uh, baseball diamonds, soccer pitches, ice rental. Um, and it is scaled based on the age, so a little bit more for adult classes, senior and youth. I kept the same. Quite often, senior and youth are, are around the same in many different of our fees. Um, so then option C looks at um, a seasonal approach. Um, but depending on the class, um, I wanted to uh, scale that as well. Cause if someone's coming in, you know, once a year, um, they're obviously not going to want to do a seasonal rate. Um, but if someone is doing um, a ton, you could save money this way by offering a discounted rate for a seasonal uh, permit. Um, and then I, I wanted to basically say like through this conversation that option D would basically be any combination of, of these three options. Um, I do think it's important for our fees and charges by law that um, that we, we keep it simple. Um, so I looked at these three options to try and simplify things. Um, and I'm happy to uh, to hear some feedback on these options. And uh, I did recommend as a staff recommendation to go with the per participant per session, similar to our skating programs at the arena. Um, I think that will um, keep as many people as hap- as happy as possible um, and make it affordable. And to allow um, you know, programming to happen in our parks in the general green space. So happy to, to answer any questions.
Great, thanks, Chris. Counselor Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. Chris, just a quick question. Option A, I get why you're recommending it. Uh, per session. So if it's a 10-week session, it's $5. And that's it. So if she's got 10 participants, we'll say 10 adults. It's $5 per adult once. So it's $50 per session. Correct?
So through your worship, so you can, you can kind of view the per session. Um, that would be like almost per course or per class. So um, we could clarify that a bit. Um, what I was thinking is if you're offering a six-week class, um, you know, you could look at it like, okay, for a youth, it's $3 every time that you attend. Um, or we could change the wording of that to speak to what you're talking about. Um, if it's a six-week program, you pay that once. Um, or we could go the other way where you pay that each time that you're attending. Um, this option would also allow the business owner to put that, that part of the, the fee for attending the classes back on the participant. Um, and they could keep their costs or their registration fees, if you will, the same. And then say, this is the added fee that goes to the town.
Okay, I really think that this needs to be clarified because you can look at session. I have a one-hour session, but it's happening for the next 10 weeks. If I'm a single person running a business, I don't want to have to figure out, okay, I had two, three-year-olds this week for a one-hour session and I owe this much, but they're enrolled for this class, but they're enrolled for a 10-week session. I think it should just be for the length of time that the session's running. Because if you're giving, in the case of, I'm going to use Pegasus because that's the driver for this conversation. If she's giving a reduced rate to allow children to participate, she's not only losing money, she like, she's not even breaking even. She's, she's paying out of pocket. So I think if we can make this as simple as possible, because the people that are paying for this aren't major corporations. And let's be real, we're picking up the garbage and cutting the grass anyway. So we're not covering any equipment, so I think we really need to be very specific. If it's a 10-week session, you have 10 adults, it's $5 per adult, and it's 50 bucks for that 10-week session total. Does that make sense to everybody?
I, uh, that, that, that's why I took it. When, when I saw the per session, I thought it was, it's per class. And, and so that's, and where I found it, I thought it was, I thought it was a good idea, Chris, like with the option A, I really did. Because i- if you're running a class, is there a little more administration to it maybe? But if you, if you're running the business and, and you get two kids, it's, it's, you're, you're losing money for sure. And if you run the business and you get 15 kids, then you, you might make a little extra money. But um, I like the idea that, that the owner isn't penalized if they have bad weather. They're not penalized if families go away for the summer. Um, I, 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 I thought that was a good, I, I thought was a neat idea. I mean, I, I was all in for the uh, you just pay a fat rate, be done with it. But I know that's probably easier, but I, I think this might be a little more flexible, other than being more flexible, you have to have a little more work to it. That's all. So anyway, sorry, I, I jumped ahead of the queue here, but uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, thank you through you, your worship. Uh, yeah, I like option A where, you know, that's a $5 for an adult per session. $3 for senior per session. We, we do the same thing at our, at our club, at our gun club. Uh, when we rent out the facilities, it's based on how many people appear. So if the instructor's running a course and two people show up, well, they pay $10 ahead. If 20 people show up, they pay $10 ahead, all, all the same. So um, that's just a par and partial, but it just keeps it simpler just to run a per session. I think my option A is good.
Can I through you?
Sorry, go ahead, though.
Can I make a recommendation then that we change it from session to class? If what you're talking about is a class, so Tuesday's class, I'm going to pay $5 for my, or I'm going to pay $3 for my mother, because she's a senior. Whereas, you know, and, and she's going to pay $3 next week, and she's going to pay $3 next week, and she's going to pay $3 next week. But you've, you're putting the onus on the business order to collect that money every week and keep track of, and so-and-so didn't come. And are we looking at collecting this weekly, monthly? But how often does, does a person have to pay? Cause she may not know until the day of the class, because it's too wet, only half the class showed up. Honestly, when I hear the word session, six-week session, one-hour classes.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through, so through you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I would say that if, if people are booking space within the park, it would be our expectation that they would know how many people are, are within that specific area. Anyway, they would want to keep a record of that because they're running a, um, a sanctioned activity. So I, I think that part um, might be somewhat easier. Um, I think that uh, while there are some people that would be renting the park space where they may not be collecting a lot of money, there might alternatively be people that would be charging, say, for widespread yoga classes. Or say there was, you know, large Tai Chi, Tai Chi classes that people were charging for, there might be an expense there. Um, I, I think the, you know, the, the people that are booking space, similar to, to an ice rink are, are by them booking a, a dedicated space, that means other members of the public won't be using that space for that period of time. Um, so I, I think that the, the booking fee in that way makes sense, similar to what we're doing for continuity in, in other areas. If council um, believes that the, say, $5 or what we're charging is onerous, I would recommend that uh, the way to ease the burden would be the, the level of cost, but not necessarily the method of allocation.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
If, if that makes sense, Counselor.
Go ahead, Mike.
So figure out whatever you want to call it, like, you know what I mean by class or whatever, but I agree with number one. The most people that are going to be impacted with all those classes or ages, unless you have the Tai Chi class with, the girls are over 55. But all I'm saying is, is it's $3. You know what I mean? It's $3 for the kids that have a class. So therefore, if you're going to ask a, a, a business to provide, you know, insurance and not, it's like doing a transaction, that's the reason why they have a dollar. Well, you're doing $3. So it just makes everything legal. They go ahead at the end of the day or the end of the mo- month or the end of the session. I had eight people this day and I had seven people the next day or at five or whatever it is or how it is. But what I like is that the fee is not too exorbitant. So it's 17 and under. All right, and if you're under three, it's free, but from four to 17, which is huge, you can drive there and pay $3 to have your class. So I think it's fair and I like your option A, so I'll just move staff recommendation. You go with A and change the wording. So Counselor Hicks.
I just.
So it, I understand it because it could be referred to two different ways. So if you, you pick the word that it's not session, it's class or whatever you want to do.
Yeah, go ahead. I think uh, Mr. Brown wants to weigh in.
Yeah, just a point of clarification for me. Um, so if Pegasus is running a six-week session and they have 10 kids um, at the youth rate, they're paying the $3 times the 10 for the entire six weeks. That's council's intention? Or?
For the 10-week session. Unless you change it to class and then it's $3 per child for class. And then you're getting up and you're going to be.
Okay, so I think I'm clear now. So class means every time you show up and session means the, the program that's in place. Um, and so if we're leaving it as session, then if there's a program for six weeks, the one participant pays the $3 for that six weeks.
Uh, that's, that's, Mike, that's the way I interpret it. I interpret that as a class. I interpret that as a session. I, I don't interpret the, the whole thing as a session. So um, I think we've got to get clear to Mr. Brown that if, if it's $3 every time you show up, which I think what we're talking about, that's what it is. Call it a class or, or, or just explain it if we have to. But um, that's, when, when I read it, I, per session is per class.
Sorry, may I? So if it were me, hi. Allison, Bethany, who, whoever I'm talking to, I want to book Conservation Park for a 10-week parkour session. A 10-week session. That could be two-hour classes, that could be one-hour classes, you could have 80-year-olds and eight-year-olds. But it's 10 weeks and it's based on the age and she would collect the money and remit that once she's collected the money based on registration.
I don't want to belabor this because then it, it's getting late, people get angry and then I get hit. So the point is, is what I look at is you can go ahead and say, it's a session, you know? I went to the back and I had to go for a, crack my back of the chiropractor for, do how to do a chiropractor session. Or you can call it a class or call it whatever you want. If you have a sign up to the program or sign up for that, you know, whatever. How you figure it out, I don't care. All I know is that option A is three bucks a time every time you go, and that's the majority of it. How you want to word it, fill your boots, guys.
Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So the intention of option A from uh, was that each time people are showing up to occupy space that other members of the public can't occupy, uh, they will be charged for that. Um, we will reflect that within uh, the cost structure. Um, and we will make sure that that is clear, that people understand um, it's not $3 for 10 times. It's $3 every time that we're, you're occupying a space that is now unavailable for other people to recreate in.
Sorry.
I'm pretty sure we're going to do that.
Okay. I'll move.
Go ahead, Bill.
I, I can't vote for that if it's changed to class. I'm sorry. Uh, session is one session. You know, if I sign up for a, for a hockey school class, it could be 10 weeks, but a session is one, one.
I think this is semantics.
Uh, I, I, if, if we could take a 10-minute break and what I could do is I'd get the Webster's Dictionary out and then we could actually get the definition of, oh, thank you, Counselor Norrie. The bottom line is, is that these people, the people that are going to rent the, the, and let's, let's use anybody, it doesn't matter. They're going to rent the, the park. They're going to rent it for one, one hour or two hours a week for 10 weeks. We know that. That's what they're going to rent because they're going to book it on a, for two hours on, on a Tuesday every week. Every time they have that two-hour session, they have a class. If they have, people show up, it's going to be $3 for each, and then they're going to be responsible for uh, for tracking that. So um, I don't know if uh, I, I don't know if we need to belabor this much longer, but uh, I think Counselor Norrie may be able to help us out here. Can you?
Basically, it means once, a meeting once. If you look under, under the Webster, yeah, session, that's once. It's, it's right in the dictionary.
It never, you can't fault Webster's. Anyways, I think, I, I think, Chris, you've, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, this is again very similar to the way we charge for um, adult skate. When they come to the arena, they pay their $3 and they go out and skate. When they come back the next day, they pay $3 again. Same with pickleball, same with shuffleboard. They pay each time they come um, to be in our facilities and using our space. So this would be exact same as that.
Yeah, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Um, so just through your worship, one additional point that may help put council at ease. Uh, our public notice bylaw does require us to advertise about this. And then when the bylaw to amend the fees and charges comes back, if council has heard overwhelmingly from your citizens that this is not an acceptable way to set this fee, you still have another opportunity at your second meeting in September to change your mind.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any other discussion with respect to um, this conversation?
All move staff recommendation, option A.
Counselor Hicks has moved staff recommendation, count, option A, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed, motions carried. Yeah, it's getting late. I know that. Um, next up, Financial and IT Services Community Emergency Preparedness Grant Program Report. Uh, Mr. Nobes, you're going to speak to this.
Thank you, worship, and through you to council. Um, this uh, came before council previously where um, uh, Ms. Tyers uh, proposed to council applying for this grant, which she was successful in obtaining. Uh, we were awarded $50,000 uh, through the Community Emergency Preparedness Grant Program. And allocations in the following amounts were um, made uh, under that grant. So $32,000 to go towards a hardwired natural gas generator at the Towne Barnes, $1,200 for two mobile Starlink internet satellites, $9,000 for an enclosed trailer for emergency evacuation supplies, and $5,500 to purchase shelter kits to evacuate up to 100 people and $2,300. to purchase shelter kits to evacuate up to 100 people and $2,300, $2,300 to purchase emergency preparedness, public education materials. Um, the items other than the gas generator are fully funded through the, uh, through the grant. What we found is that when we went to the canoe procurement for the generator, our initial estimate was slightly low. Um, in that the, uh, lowest, uh, bid that came back was, uh, $43,000 in change. And we would have an installation cost, uh, over and above that. So what we're looking for is council's approval to use, uh, up to a maximum of $18,500 from development charges to cover the delta in that cost. Um, so 32,000 from the grant and up to 18,500 from development charges, which would come from the Public Works Fleet and Facilities Sub-Reserve Fund. So we would be, um, uh, in alignment with the DC background study to use DCs for this, uh, uh, delta in cost. Because the DC Act allows, um, us to, uh, increase capacity and, 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 uh, invest in, uh, capital costs related to installing new equipment at, uh, fleet for facilities, uh, where we would be adding capacity for the municipality. So what this would do is would provide during power outages, the ability for, uh, Public Works and other, uh, departments to continually be able to fuel, uh, fleet and provide backup power to the actual facilities, uh, on the site itself. So it's, uh, it, it, there's multi, it's multi-purpose this generator. It's not just fueling, um, supplying power to the, the fuel station, but it's also powering buildings on the property as well. So, um, staff are, um, recommending that council approve the use of up to 18,500 from that sub-reserve fund, uh, for this purpose as it's in line with the, uh, intent of the background study.
Thanks, Michael. Any question or comments? Uh, for Michael, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you. Through your worship, Michael, we got a big generator across the road here from, uh, 12 Market Square. We have to disconnect, relocate. Is that not something we could relocate up to the hill?
Through your worship, unfortunately not. Uh, the type of wiring, it's 12208 wiring and the wiring at the hill is not. So it would not be compatible with, uh, what would be coming in from, um, uh, or needing to be supplied on that site, unfortunately, given the, the difference in, in wiring at the fuel pumps and the building itself.
What was wiring again? I missed that.
Uh, 12208. So it's, it's an older style of wiring that's really only tied to, uh, the type of wiring at 12 Market Square. I understand from our electricians. So really, or Town Hall rather. Um, so really the only bu- building that would benefit from use of that generator is Town Hall, uh, at the end of the day. So we're looking at relocating that to the southwest corner of, of Town Hall, if it's feasible, um, to have some, some reuse for that generator. Um, but unfortunately the other buildings, um, will not support the use of that generator, uh, in the whole municipality that we have, unfortunately.
Okay, just, just long as we're not just going to turf that one because I mean, it's perfectly good generator for some, for something. So, all right, thank you.
Through your worship, the, the intent is to not, we're going to do everything we can to avoid, um, disposing of it. Um, and if we really can't make it work for Town Hall, we would look to sell it and, and at least salvage some monies for it. But the intent is to hopefully be able to provide some redundancy to Town Hall.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Thank you, Mr. Nobes. Are there any other questions or comments with respect to the, uh, this report or Mike's presentation? Go ahead, Counselor Schenk, go ahead.
It's 12208 wiring. To be honest, I can't remember if that's what's coming into it or going out or a combination of both. Um, I'd have to get that, uh, detail from our electrician, but that's, that's what was mentioned when we've been meeting with Hydro One on site, uh, regarding 12 Market Square and potential use of it. Yeah, we wouldn't be able to relocate that generator up to the Public Works area because of that.
Great, thanks. Uh, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, we do have a recommendation, council received for information, the Financial IT Services Community Emergency Preparedness Grant Program Report infer that council approved the use of 18,500 in development charges to fund the additional cost of the generator and associated installation costs that was not funded through the Community Emergency Preparedness Grant Program. Moved by, uh, Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Uh, Waste Diversion Committee Recommendation, Waste Diversion Awareness Booth. And I'm not sure who's speaking to this.
Let me speak to this again.
I, I, I don't see anybody else jumping up, Bill, so go ahead.
Basically, the Waste Diversion Committee wants to, uh, provide information on the change to the blue box, uh, system coming, coming the first of the year. And, um, we want to set up an information booth. There may be some differences in how we do this. We may have to be outside on the perimeter from what I'm hearing, but, um, basically we want to give information to the community on the transition to the blue box, uh, system coming the first of the year. There's literally no cost to the town. We may want to print up a few things, but other than, other than that, there'll be very little cost involved to the town. We just want the council's, uh, blessing on doing this. Uh, it's, it's during the hazardous waste day, so it's, it's all a combination of everything. There'll be staff present anyways, so there's no additional staff required.
Great, thanks. Uh, thanks, Bill. Is there any questions or comments for Bill? Uh, I think so. You're looking for a resolution, a note received and to approve the Waste Diversion Committee's proposal to incorporate an awareness booth in the household hazardous waste day event and support the use of the town communications resources towards this initiative. Is that? Am I guessing that's kind of what you're looking for?
Yes, sorry.
Uh, go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Uh, I was going to move the resolution and if I may also provide an idea that maybe if it's too difficult to do anything right at the, um, GFL site, maybe you could use 99 Advance because it's on a weekend, so the parking lot might be kind of empty. If you're looking to do sales of things, you could just have a big sign directing people to go to 99. It's just down the road. Just a thought.
I guess, I guess the only question I have is, um, have we, have we reached out to the folks at the hazardous waste day or no? Have we, have we talked to them? Just, just to ensure that, that they have a prob, don't have a problem. I, I think it's a good idea. I just want to know, like, have we reached out and said, listen, this is what we want to do. Do you have an area for us?
Yeah, well, Christie, our staff member on the community is Dr. GIL and, and that's, that was the problem. We thought we could just set up a booth, you know, in the line or whatever. Um, but they don't want anybody other than their workers outside of a vehicle. So that excludes us from, so, but we're, we're going to try to divert maybe outside of that or, you know? We'll, we'll, we'll come up with a different system, but we're still going to want to do it anyway. So can I put it that way? I don't know if that makes sense, but.
No, i- i- it does make sense. It's, I, I'm just trying to figure out the logistics of how, how. I, I, I guess you're going to continue to work with staff to try and make this happen. I, I, I'm sensing that there's, there's no resistance from a council to do it. It's just a matter of working out the logistics of how to do it. Am I, am I, am I correct with that assessment? Okay, so.
You're correct.
We'll look for, for a motion, uh, the, that, um, council received for the information, the Waste Diversion Advisory Committee Recommendation, Waste Diversion Awareness Booth Report. And further that council approved the Waste Diversion Committee's proposal to incorporate an awareness booth in the household hazardous waste day event and support the use of town communications to uh, resources towards this initiative. And I think we need to probably put in there to continue to work with staff to find an, an applicable location for the information booth. Does that sort of work, Madam Clerk? Hey, I'm getting better at these things. Bill, did you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll do that.
And Madam Clerk, you have what you need. And is there a secondary, uh, Counselor Norrie? Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motions on the floor? It's, uh, if there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed, motion's carried. Uh, Market Square Advisory Committee Recommendation, Website Update is, uh, who's speaking to this one? Oh, there's Chris. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. So just, uh, just real quick, um, at our, uh, last meeting, the, uh, committee had recommended, um, that a page be added to educate the community on the building's history, current projects and future events here, uh, at Town Hall. As a, as a staff recommendation, um, I'm just looking for some direction, but essentially the, the town's website does have a page, uh, with information about Town Hall. It hasn't been updated in quite some time. Uh, we thought it'd be a good opportunity to update, um, the general public on, uh, the things that are, the exciting things that are happening, uh, with this building and the market square. Um, we thought that the Town Hall page on the town's website would be a great spot to do that. Um, that is within, um, the normal scope of work for our communication staff. And so, um, as the staff wrap on the committee, I would work with the communication staff member to, uh, start to get more, uh, updated information on that page on the website and sort of, uh, have the, the public be able to follow along on, on the improvements that are being made and, and updating, uh, where we're at within the entire project as a whole. Um, obviously the alternative option would be not to make any changes to the website, but, um, we're hoping that, uh, council sees the benefit in that. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Yep, great, Counselor Schenk.
So I'll move that motion because especially with the Rotary Club, the community partners and everything else, to bring the community together to get all in for fundraising and everything else to do it, I support it wholeheartedly.
I'll second.
Yeah, so we do have a mover and a secondary, Counselor Schenk and Counselor Hicks. And I'm sensing that, uh, the motion would be, uh, the council received for information, the Market Square Advisory Committee Recommendation, Website Update Report and further that council direct staff to perform the website updates as recommended by the committee. Am I correct in that? Okay, I think we, uh, we got us a motion and we have a movement and a secondary. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed, motion's carried. Arts Advisory Committee Recommendation, Palatable Art Program. And I'm not sure who's, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Jess.
Um, so through your worship, at the recent Arts Advisory Committee meeting, there was a recommendation to request Parks staff to perform some minor maintenance work to the, uh, pallet art installations around the community. Um, uh, the, the director of, of Parks Recreation and Culture has confirmed that staff are, have done that work in the past and, and are willing to continue to do that work, but staff would recommend as an enhancement to, um, what the committee has suggested, that we also look to put some operating guidelines in place, uh, that, that confirms that staff will do that work. It'll be part of their routine maintenance. Um, but if the artwork itself is ever damaged, that's not something that's within the scope of town staff to do and that would need to go back to the arts committee to be responsible for, um, getting that done.
Sounds, uh, pretty reasonable. Go ahead, Counselor Norrie.
Yes, we didn't want anything to do with the art, but it's like a piece of wood loose. And there are new stakes for them, which Bethany has now. She was given them all, so they're in, probably at the arena. So it's just a matter of someone with a screw gun putting a screw in now and again, when they see something loose. Very simple. But as far as the art, no, nobody wants the art touched, you know, that'll be a whole different ballgame.
Great, perfect. Appreciate that. So, um, if there's no, nothing further, it sounds like we, uh, have a, uh, recommendation that council received for information, the Arts Advisory Recom- Committee Recommendation, Palatable Art Program Maintenance Report and further that council direct staff to perform minor maintenance to the palatable art installations as defined by the committee and further that council direct staff to implement a standards operating, standard operating guidelines for the palatable art installations whereby town staff are responsible for routine hardware maintenance as part of their regular service levels and that Arts Committee, uh, Advisory Committee is responsible for identifying repairs, coordinating any restoration of art work by the qualified artists and making recommendations for the removal and/or replacement of the artwork if restoration cannot be accomplished. Yep. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Bylaws. I don't believe we have any bylaws. Information reports from members. Uh, do we have any information reports for, uh, from members? Seeing none. Uh, inquiries. Do any members of council have any inquiries? Counselor, Counselor Norrie.
Yeah, sorry about this. It's going to be quick. Um, what, a month or so ago, before all the meetings got backed up, I was asked by a local business person, a pharmacy on John Street. They have issues, uh, seniors getting close to the pharmacy to park. Is there any way they could look into the possibility of maybe two spots with 15 minute parking? I know I heard the same thing from Butter My Buns when they were there. People just couldn't park, run in and get something. And the second part is we have four spots here for staff. There's nobody working here, but we do have a cleaner. Can we eliminate three of them to make just one staff parking so that people can at least walk over to the pharmacy if they need to? It's elderly people who can't get close to their pharmacy. Just, he's asking the possibility of that. And the second part, could it be looked into and come back in a month or whenever?
I'm guessing that, uh, Madam Clerk can probably, uh, facilitate that. I'm not sure what her timeline is. I'm, I'm thinking that's your department, is it not, Jess, or no?
So through your worship, uh, parking signage is through the parking bylaw. Uh, if council wanted to designate 15 minute parking, that would need to be done through, um, an amendment to the parking bylaw. We are working on a review of the parking bylaws. I can certainly take that as feedback. We would not recommend any 15 minute parking be dedicated to any speci- like reserved for any specific business. Not sure if that was part of the ask or not. And at this point, because a bylaw amendment still hasn't been done, technically, everything behind Town Hall is still designated as staff only parking. Um, we would love to, this is temporary signage that's in there right now to reflect the, the current reality, but we'd look to update that properly in the, in the next bylaw update.
Thank you. Uh, no, I know he did ask me that, but I said, I don't think you can have signs for your store. But I, I came up with the idea of the 15 minutes, just so the seniors hopefully can park close to get in and out. There's a little ramp at a store, but a lot of his people came from his last store and then it's, it's getting harder and harder to park downtown, especially when you're a senior like me. Would be handy. Just an idea if they can look into it. Thank you.
Yep, great, thanks. Uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you through your worship. Actually, uh, that's a great idea. Um, I'd probably look at making all of John Street for what few parking spaces there is on John Street, a limited, a shorter limited time because you've got pharmacies, you've got banks, you got, you know, people that are trying to get in and out. And, uh, lots of times you go downtown, there is no place to park. So I think if we're only talking maybe eight or 10 parking spots for all of John Street, it would make, make it easier than, you know, two or three parking spots. Just my two cents worth. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver. And I know that, uh, Madam Clerk has been listening attentively and I'm sure that she can, uh, guide us in, in a few, future meeting, I'm sure. Uh, is there anything else? Any other inquiries of, uh, council? Uh, notices of motion? Does anybody got any notices of motion? New business? Uh, any announcements? Counselor Norrie.
Just a quick shout out, uh, reading the V, I was away, but they are, are U11 and other baseball teams got all wins at the tournament a couple of weeks ago? And then one of them, I think, U11 won every game this year plus the gold. So just shout out to the kids in town for some great, uh, baseball.
Absolutely. Thanks, Counselor Norrie. We are, uh, world renowned for our softball. There's no doubt about that. And, uh, any, any kid that grew up in this municipality, I'm sure has probably got either an All Ontario or an All Canadian, uh, certificate on their wall. So it's, uh, it's a tradition here now and, uh, and it's something we should be proud of. So thank you, uh, for mentioning that. Uh, is there anything else? Seeing none, um, CAO's remarks. Mr. Grant, do you have any, uh, words of wisdom for us this evening?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not from me, but on behalf of the fire chief, we had to leave early, uh, earlier this evening. Uh, open air burning, um, uh, remains prohibited and we anticipate that a total burn ban will, uh, continue until the end of August.
Great. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Grant. Forward calendar. We've all had an opportunity to look at the forward calendar as well as the resolution trackers. Is there any in either of those documents anyone had any questions or comments about or would last, uh, would like to, uh, mention or talk about? Seeing none, look for a motion for the, to confirm the proceedings by, for the bylaw to confirm proceedings, the Council Corporation, Town of Greater Nappany. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schenk. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schenk. Read a first, second and finally passed this twenty-sixth day of August, twenty-twenty-five, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried and motion for adjournment. Moved by, or Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schenk. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Thanks, folks, it was, it was a challenging evening tonight and, and we appreciate your indulgence and we'll probably see you tomorrow.